It is 6:33 on January 13th, 2022. Welcome to the Town of Sherburne Select Board Meeting and I call this meeting to order. Please like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to read or read the relative agenda for the executive session we're about to enter.
You're muted.
You're muted Diane.
Sorry about that. The executive session is to discuss to prepare for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct negotiations with non-union personnel and to obtain legal advice from Town Council pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a and 2 and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus D.CAM 449 Mass. 444 (2007), Town Administrator. The Board will return to open session immediately following the executive session.
Thank you very much. All right, as Chair, I declare that the executive session is warranted for the item that just has previously read. And I move that we go into executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
You all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
All right, please stop recording right now. You stopped recording. Thank you. Okay, it is 7:01 on January 13th, 2022. Welcome to the Town of Sherburne Select Board Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. First off, I'd like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to please read the agenda, removing the initial item on executive session. Just so people who aren't aware, we actually met earlier in an executive session. We exited the executive session and now opening this open session right now. At least Diane, any muted just yet?
Good evening. So I will read the agenda and the Board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. And there was a public comment section, but I have not received any indication from any that they, anybody that'd like to make a public comment tonight. So item number one is the consent agenda, which is the payroll warrant and the next meeting date of January 27th. Item number two was a COVID update and Darrell Beardsley, the Board of Health Chair, will be joining us tonight. Item number three, the consideration of increase the municipal lien certificates. Fee from $25 to $50 have been asked by the town collector to remove this item from the agenda for tonight. Item number four is the FY23 Omnibus Budget Capital Items Continuation Review of the Draft Warrant Checklist. We have the Conservation Commission in front of us tonight with Neil Kessler, the Chair, and Kelly McClintock. The Fire Department Budget and Capital Items with Chief Ward and the Police Department Budget and Capital Items with Chief Galvin. Number five is the consideration of acceptance of gift to the Sherburne Fire Department, and that's Chief Ward again. Item number six is the Opera Fund Funding. And it's a continued discussion, this time with advisory and the Capital Budget Committee members regarding subcontract services to assist with Opera Funds and other administrative tasks. Item number seven is a discussion of potential appointment of interim Town Administrator. Number eight is potentially establishing Town Administrator Search Committee. And item number nine, considering routine business as select board reports. And under there is the consideration of granting a signatory approval regarding select board vendor and payroll warrants. And a consideration of vote on behalf of the Town at the January 22nd, 2022 Annual MMA Business Meeting. The Board will then adjourn into executive session for item number one, which is to meet with Town Council, discuss a complaint letter dated August 16th, 2021 from Jonathan Hudson Walker and Lisa Hudson Walker of Silverwood Farm LLC against the Conservation Commission pursuant to Massachusetts General Law is Chapter 38, Section 21a, 1, 3, and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus D.CAM 449 Mass. 444, 2007. Item number two is strategy session to prepare for contract negotiations with non-union bargaining employees pursuant to General Law, Chapter 38, Section A, 2, and 7, in Suffolk Construction versus D.CAM 449 Mass. 444, 2007. The DPW Director, the Board will return to public session to adjourn the evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much Diane. I mean motions relative to the agenda.
Well, am I right in that we are removing item three? Did you, you decided?
Yes.
So I moved that we approved the agenda as read with the revision to defer or delete item three.
Very good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And George? I'm also I. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along, consent agenda. Excuse me. Do I have any motions or discussion relative to the consent agenda?
Move or approve.
All right.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
I'm also I. Thank you. Okay, first up, COVID update. Darrell Beardsley, Board of Health, looking.
Hi, I'm here.
We're, okay, I don't see you, but I'll tell, I hear you, so that's most important. Please go ahead.
Let's see. I don't think I have a lot to tell you that folks don't already know, just from the news and what's going on and the surges. And if anyone saw the information that Matt pulls together from the various databases around and graphing, things were pretty much a straight line up there at the end of the year. And between December 20th, I believe, and now we've had 150 or so cases in town. I don't have that exact number in front of me right now. Sorry, I was busy with the work until just moments ago, so. However, at least the numbers are starting to come down, including that even in the MWRA wastewater monitoring data, it's also starting to come down because really testing hasn't been able to keep up with the cases or people's desire to be tested. And then there's a lot of at-home testing that goes on. And when people do at-home testing, even if they call the Board of Health or contact any other department, it really can't be entered into the state's database of information. So just so everyone understands that extra piece of it, so we think that the numbers are higher than what we're even seeing officially. In any case, in response to that, the Board of Health provided recommendations that I believe you've seen and have been distributed within town. I did want to note that although they're called recommendations, they are not like recommendations. They should really, they are precautionary measures that are part of the layered strategy that Matt has explained in the past that should be implemented throughout town. I really hope people take it to heart. The main parts are wearing masks in indoor spaces. Distancing is not a substitute for wearing a mask. So wearing masks, don't come into buildings or into work if you're not feeling well. And then if you need help, there's some testing options going on right now and maybe coming in the near future. And if you do determine that you're positive, but that hasn't been officially captured because it was with an at-home test, please let your supervisor know or your close contacts know because those kinds of things will not be contact traced by public health nurses. And frankly, the public health nurses are also quite overwhelmed at the moment. And so if people can help out, that would be great. And the other thing is that we never recommended that the remote working be discontinued. And so we'd just like to reiterate that that should still be options that people employ right now because, as you know, Omicron is very contagious. And so some of the strategies that were extremely effective in the past are less effective now, as best we can tell. It's a little hard to know with precision what the dynamics are. But given that hospital staff that previously was doing very well does not do as well now with Omicron. And their hospitals are seeing increased rates, percentages within their staff. So that's all the cheery news, but in any case, I don't know if the Select Board would like to back up the Board of Health recommendations and help to encourage people to follow those recommendations within town.
Is that, are those recommendations in our background? Are they in our background right now, just so we can?
Yeah, I think they're in the packet. There under, there's a memo from the Board.
Yep, they're in the packet.
They were actually released by Ellen and Diane this Monday of this week, though, on the, to the town employees.
I should say that Matt, Matt Vitale and I mainly, mainly I kind of revise them to make clearer the instructions on rapid testing if possible before returning to work or coming out of isolation. There was a little bit of fuzziness there and those, so we cleared those up. So there's going to be a fresh version of those recommendations coming out in the next day or so. So watch, watch for them and they will be on the town website if I understand. Is that true, Darrell? Are you going to put those on the website for everybody? They're mostly geared toward town employees, but you know, they-
Should also be visitors. It'll be, it'll be on the website. And anybody could follow the guidance about how to test and when to test and what does it mean? And what does isolation and quarantining mean now? So, so yes, and we just wanted to get something out as quickly as possible because so much had gone on over the holiday period that we didn't want to delay. And we will make improvements and certainly are available to answer questions. And there is testing, the school community is probably more aware of this, but there is testing going on at the school periodically on several levels, both from school staff who help with symptomatic cases and testing in the morning to clear students for coming in and staff. And then there's a special service to mobile unit that's coming three days a week for several hours and you need to sign up for that. And also the town, we are planning to order some number of tests, rapid test kits to be used to help supplement school efforts to keep students in school. And then perhaps to help screen for when anyone, employees who have tested positive, when they're cleared to come back into town buildings.
Okay, I see Paul DuRentes has a question. Please, Paul, yeah, go ahead.
All right, I was trying to make a motion since the request was made like 10 minutes ago to endorse the recommendations as set forth by the Board of Health in our packet, together with any amendments from Marion Nutr.
From Marion?
Well, Marion and the team, Zach actually hosted on Wednesday afternoon a COVID-19 meeting with the town COVID group, including Ellen and Darrell and Marion and Diane and myself. So I just wanted to announce that and I second Paul's motion.
Okay, now before we collect the vote, that's when I kind of almost like, I don't know if it's a point of order or what it is. So we're just endorsing it. Like, is there anything else? Like, for example, when it says we recommend masks in buildings, we are the caretakers of public facilities. Do we actually have to order that to happen or is this endorsing is good enough? Does anyone know? Although saying endorsing is probably good enough. Okay, let's see, all in favor of the motion and the second to endorse the Board of Health recommendations? Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
I am also I. All right, thank you much, Darrell. Is there anything else?
Thank you.
I have one quick question for Darrell. Darrell, do you know when, I mean, this is more self-serving than anything, but do you know, I, my kids are, need to get boosted. Like, do you know when 12 to 15-year-olds? I know that they approved it at the CDC level. When are they going to start offering them more widespread? Or are they widespread now?
I think they're widespread. It's more a timing thing. It depends on when your children receive the vaccinations, right? So, and also whether they've been positive at any time, because then there's also a delay if they had COVID before you get a booster. So that you, I think checking with their, your pediatrician would be the best thing for that timing. And then it's a matter of scheduling.
Yeah, I think that's-
There's still all those services available online for finding a location.
I think it's six months, though, after your second-
My kids have been, were vaccinated in May, so they're past the six months, so it's good.
One other thing I was going to note on this subject, and maybe people saw this in the Boston Globe, but there's now a Massachusetts sort of website where you can get the QR code for your vaccination, because I travel internationally sometimes, though not yet. And they don't accept our goofy little paper vaccination card. So you can go in and type in your, just your name and I, address and everything and email address. And they'll send you the QR code, which is scannable by any group that wants to validate that you're vaccinated. So it's useful to have, I think.
And that website is all one word, myvax, with an X, records.mass.gov.
Darrell, can that be also posted on the town website? Because everyone will want to know that.
Yes.
Yep. It's very easy to do, but it's very helpful, even conferences you go to. I even went to a Bruins game a month and a half ago and you had to show your vaccination record to get into Boston Garden or TD Garden or whatever it is.
Okay. All right, without any further ado, I think that's it. Thank you. I think you'll get there all. Yeah, as you said, agenda number three, we are not making any discussion on. Agenda number four, FY23 Omnibus Budgets, Capital Items, Continuation Review of Draft Warrant Checklist. First up, we have Conservation Commission FY23 Budget, Neil Kessler, Chair, and Kelly McClinic.
So, so I'm on all of these, Eric. I'm going to share my screen, which I have the budgets in it. If I accomplish this correctly.
Oh, nice picture.
Thank you. How about that? Is that, can you see the budgets now?
Yep.
They come up all right. That's what that's the, we're doing conservation first, is that right?
Yeah, doing the order as I presented my agenda.
So just Neo or whoever's lead, just let me know, because I can scroll down to other pages or whatever you want me to do.
Okay. Kelly, you're here, correct?
I'm here for the land management part of it. Neil is here too, and he would be better equipped to talk about the agent increase, which is a big deal for us.
Okay, so should I just sort of address, I mean, pretty much, Kelly can address some of the rest of the pieces, but I'll speak briefly to, you know, the increase in the agent. And as I came to you sometime last year, it's a little bit of a blur when that happened. But when I came to you last year, I kind of, my first step to trying to get the agent position back to being 35 hours and benefited was to present to the Select Board the rationale for that, the increased workload, the increased pressure on public lands, the fact that I felt that we were, you know, perhaps a little out of keeping with some other towns that had similar amounts of conservation land to manage and just all of those things. And so we've put that rationale into the budget proposal and the rationale for it. But as you can see in the line item here, the conservation agent has gone from budgeted $31,278 at 19 hours in FY22 to $59,693 in FY23. So obviously that's a substantial increase because we've gone from 19 to 35 hours. I don't, if you'd like me to, I can certainly go through some of the, some more details about it, but since I presented it already, maybe if you guys wanted to ask any questions about it, that might be the best way to start.
What does the Board, what does the Board prefer?
Questions are probably only.
Okay, if you know, I want to hit like one or two highlights, actually, actually for me, actually, I'll open with a question. I guess, um, go through a brief explanation of why, you know, essentially doubling of the hours, you know, and and the only other question I have is the, is the benefit cost, how is that calculated? Maybe someone else on the Board can even explain that to me. So it's not just a $30,000 increase, but it's, um, there's obviously going to go from zero benefits to benefits. There has to be some kind of cost and where is that factored in?
Okay, why don't I address, give you the high-level justification first and then we can step into those other questions. So basically, as, as everyone is aware, we spent 10 or 11 months without a full-time agent in the process of trying to hire somebody at 19 hours back in the spring. We did get one candidate who worked for about four weeks and reported that the workload was too heavy. We had seen a real big increase in NOI applications, in RDAs, especially in AA applications. And we thought that two things were working against us at advertising at 19 hours, especially since we really didn't get any viable candidates. And one was just given the workload in the job description, it really didn't match what the work was that was being done. And then the other was advertising for this level of expertise from somebody. It's a really rare fit to find somebody who only wants a half-time job doing it. Most people are making a career of it. The folks that have master's degrees, that sort of stuff. We really wanted to attract a higher-level candidate, given the complexity and also the, you know, we have a fair amount of conservation land, given the size of our town. So we ended up speaking with David Williams and we spoke with you. We went to the Personnel Board. We got them to approve changing the hours to 35. And when we advertised it, we got several applications. We ended up really three that were viable. One just sort of didn't work out, although she was extremely experienced as an agent. The other two did not have experience as an agent, but one of them has had a master's degree and good applicable experience that we felt we could train. So that was actually who we ended up hiring, Anna Meyer, and so far she's been working out wonderfully. And she's got a steep learning curve to climb, but she's doing wonderfully. And I will tell you this, she is, there is not an hour that goes by that she's not spending on conservation issues. So I think the 35 hours is, I mean, I'm not going to say it's too little, but it is certainly, it's certainly even a challenge in that circumstance to meet the demand of the work that's kind of increased over time.
How is it, how is it set up? Is it set up that you get paid per hour up to 35 or is it traditionally exempt where it's basically a salaried employee? Who does, you know, basically 35?
It's hourly and, you know, I think the way it's listed or described is up to 35 hours. I don't think she has not used 35 hours yet, but yeah, so it's, I guess they call it regular part-time up to 35 hours benefited, so it is not salaried.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board? And just, you know, because we're sharing a screen, you look all small to me. Okay, Paul. Well, I'm trying, I can have trouble seeing people.
I just wanted to be, make it clear from what Neil said, Neil, correct me if I'm wrong. We've actually hired somebody on the basis of going up to 35 hours. So your, this request is simply to, to keep in place what is necessary to keep her employed for the next year.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. When you compare to other towns with conservation property, I know we have a lot of acres. How do we compare number of properties versus other towns? Because I don't think acreage is really a obvious, it's more managing a number of properties, whether it's 100-acre property or 50-acre property, doesn't really make much.
Neil, let me comment on that one.
Please.
Because the, in, it's for us, it's not the number of properties. We have a large number of properties, some of them small, some of them large. The management effort is the acreage of the fields. And the fields are concentrated at Barber and a couple of other reservations. And if we didn't have the fields to worry about, if it was just a forest with trails on them, there would be very, very little effort. It's the mowing, the invasives, the borders, the, it's the fields that are the significant scenic asset in the town.
And if I can just dovetail off of what you just said, Kelly, I think that for us, the, the management piece, the agent portion of it is just to kind of, we've gotten these inventories that we got started, they have management recommendations around things like invasives and other things that impact the public experience of those lands. And so having somebody who can, you know, do the work that is involved with those recommendations as we start to, you know, think about management plans and think about, you know, other things like that is, is really important.
All right, I see Marion Nutra has a question.
All right, just a clarifying question for Kelly or Neil. The, the actual management of the lands of, in which, in which you oversee, the Conservation Commission lands is one thing, but I would say, I would guess, and you can correct me, that by far the major part of the agent's work is responding to things that residents want to do on their own land or new development or whatever. Can you give us a sense of the breakdown? And my sense is that the actual maintenance of CONCOM lands in terms of time is not a major thing compared to the amount of work that you guys do every time a, a change is made on a property in town that might impact wetlands.
Kelly, do you, I don't know, I don't have a sense of the, to really be able to accurately quantify. I don't know if you do. I mean, I agree with you, Marion, in the sense that I think the lion's share of the agent's time is administrative regulatory work. But Kelly, do you have any sense of how that breaks down?
It's, that, that is absolutely correct and has been so for quite some time. But I think the increase in trail violations, motorized vehicles, it's been, it was alary, spent a fair amount of time with the state police and with town police trying to track these things down. It seems to be getting a little worse. But it will remain what Marion says, the wetlands procedures will continue to be by far the biggest load on the agent's time.
Marion, your hand is still up. Is it accidentally up or is it okay? So I have one question. Now, Dr. Tori, the Jeff or George, you know, former advisory who might notice better than I do, how do we quantify the costs of the benefits of this and where is that captured?
I think that's more on the insurance. It's not part of the conservation budget. You'll probably see an increase in insurance as we have more employees or more employees that qualify for benefits, which is a whole other wide item in town budget, which again, I'm going to say, I didn't get to say it before we started budgets, but I just want to remind everybody that we should look at the budgets as a whole. I don't, a lot of times Paul likes to suggest that we vote on these budgets as we see them, but I don't like to vote on a budget till I see what our budget is as a whole. This, this is just a piece of what's increasing for conservation because we haven't seen the insurance budget yet. I think we need to see everything and decide then where, like, where the increases can be. Because I think there's going to be a lot of requests for larger pieces.
I guess I would just add that this is kind of an already a done deal since we've already hired the person, so it's a little bit different. And I think to answer your question, Eric, in typical years, I think 20% to 25% of the salary goes into benefits. This would be different because this person wouldn't get vacation time, I don't think, because they are hourly basis. I don't believe, but I don't know that for sure, but I would say maybe 20% of the salary would be benefits, OPEB and primarily health insurance that George mentioned.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on the Board or anywhere? Actually, I have a, I'm sorry, I saw someone's hand raise or, I mean, it's gone now. Yeah, Paul?
So I want to respond to, to George a bit. I think last year we did, as George indicated, not take any votes until the end. last year we did, as George indicated, not take any votes until the end. And I think that misses an opportunity to provide leadership with the components on a preliminary basis. And have at the end more of the macro look and get to final resolution. But by not taking any votes in, in the meantime, you leave all our budget makers without any guidance. And this is an opportunity to, to give them the, that, that guidance. So I understand that there are those on the board who don't want to take any position at all. On this budget, I think I personally would support this budget. Uh, because I think it's important to the community, particularly in a forty B environment, that we have a strong conservation commission. I think the, the lands that the conservation commission manages are very important assets of the community. I think the fact that we've already got in place now an agent it pretty much sets the course for the, the increase. The fact that they have a good agent, I think makes for an even better conservation commission. This, the stronger the staff, whether it's for any board or commission in town, stronger the staff, the stronger the, the organization is. So for, for all those reasons, I would have made a motion to preliminarily give the okay to this budget. Out of respect for George, I, I won't, but I, I, again, I think we're missing an opportunity to for all of us to give some guidance and leadership to each of these boards and committees and each of these departments that we are going to be seeing about what, what our thinking is.
Okay, I, I see some raised hands here, but just, you know, I did get some clarification. I, and I forgot who said it, but apparently any employee over fo- twenty hours gets a vacation sick and personal days. So it is considered, I'm, I'm sure somehow prorated based on how many hours you put in. But it is a full benefit of position with each one of those. Okay, I'll go in the order that I see people and Paul, if you could please lower your hand. Uh, George, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, thanks. Um, just for what Paul said, I understand, I think we can give guidance without voting an approval on a budget. I feel like if we approve a budget, it's over. I feel like if we get this budget and then we see a huge increase in DPW or fire or police, like at some point, we're going to have to cut something back. So I don't feel comfortable on a macro level voting individual budgets when we haven't seen them all. And I've said this for, it's last year, I've said it every year I've been on the board. I don't, I think we need to look at, I think we can't operate in silos. We can't vote budgets until we've seen them all. And that's, that's where I, I won't vote for a budget until I've seen all the budgets.
Eric, I briefly speak to the land management part of this.
Okay, if you don't mind, I've, I have two hands raised. I do want to take those two hands and then I'll recognize, um, you Kelly on the land management.
And I want to be clear, I'm not, there's nothing against this conservation, but I know we've discussed the agent. I don't, this is not an attack on conservation. I just want to make that clear. It's a matter of, I've said this every year about every budget, so. Just, I know there's been some history there, so I just want to make sure I'm not, I don't want to be, I, I'm not attacking conservation.
It's important discussion because frankly, it sets the tone for all the budgets coming forward. Just because this is the first one, to be honest with you. Uh, Neil, please go ahead.
Yes, and so, uh, I'm actually glad that Paul and George spoke before me because I think the one question that I had was I know that advisory, when we meet with them on the nineteenth, is going to ask what you guys thought of our budget proposal. And, and so I, George, I'm glad to hear you say that you would at least be willing to sort of give the feedback. I mean, I, I don't know exactly what I need to go take to them, but I think if there's just sort of a, even an informal, a not voted upon um, bit of feedback or support, I think that's something I can take to them and, and that would work for them. Cause I don't want to be in a chicken and egg situation where they're asking for what you think and you're asking for what they think or something like that.
And, and that's, that's a good point too. I, I know they want to see feedback. I see, uh, Stephen is here, which is very nice, but obviously you can't expect them to, you know, attend two meetings all the time. Um, but even advisory, I, I kind of get what George says. Cause you're right, you vote, you like this one, but then all of a sudden, you know, three budgets down, you're like, oh, I gotta go look at this one back again. And, um, it makes the vote feel more ceremonial than anything else, to be honest. Um, but I think overall, like, I think we seem in agreement as budget, but let's, I hear Marion as I say, and I'll recognize Kelly after that.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, uh, just that. I think, uh, the idea that we need a conservation agent that is, uh, is professionally proficient has become so important when we're facing these big development projects and we need a credible voice in there for conservation. It, we need, we need a professional basically, and at nineteen hours, y- you're not going to get, uh, that level of person. So I think, uh, in principle, I think we can, we can have it both ways. We can say what, we're in favor of uh, having a higher budget for the conservation commission so that they can, uh, have benefits, but it's up to thirty-five hours. So we're not voting this amount of money for sure. We have to wait and see what the final, uh, as George said, what the final picture is. But in principle, I would certainly afford, I, I would certainly, uh,
Support.
Yes.
Support.
I would certainly approve the principle upon which is this is based. And, you know, the details can be worked out later.
Good. Uh, Kelly, you want to make a statement about the open land management?
Yes, just very briefly, we're proposing to level fund the land management side, but that hides a tremendous amount of uncertainty in here. And most of the uncertainty has to do with, um, what I'm pleased to think of as an emerging partnership with DPW. And I credit Sean, who I think is still on the call, uh, a couple of months ago, he contacted us and said, can I mow one or two of your fields? And did an extremely good job and has this new equipment and I'm sure he's experimenting with how to put it to the best use of the town. And it may be that he will be able to do a, a great deal of our regular maintenance, which will save the town a fair amount of money, but we just don't know yet.
Okay. That's very good to know. All right, any other questions? Oh, I get lots of hands raised. Uh, Marion, is your hand still raised accidentally or is it, uh, okay? Uh, Jeff?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out another thing, which we, you know, when we go to a full-time benefited position, it has a benefit to us as a town because tend to have high turnover with nineteen-hour employees because they're, you know, not making enough to cover their benefits. So then you incur the cost of transition and hiring someone new. So there is a somewhat quantitative and, and more qualitative benefit to having a full-time employee who isn't going to feel the need to quit as soon.
Sense. Uh, George?
Yeah, um, just Kelly brought up the relationship with DPW and I just wanted to say like with the agent at thirty-five hours, would they be able to help, um, DPW with their stormwater management and that, that side of it as well? I, I, I feel like it brings another, a, a lot more hours to town and, and maybe that could be some synergy. Maybe those departments can try to work. I, it sounds like Kelly said, you know, complimented DPW on helping them with that. I'd love to see that relationship be better between DPW and conservation.
So that was a question basically for technical systems with stormwater?
Yeah, the, oh, that was the point. Yeah, is, is that?
New agent is very good at that, that.
Oh, good.
Without question. And, um, let's, let's see how this develops. But a good suggestion.
Now, Jeff, is your hand still raised? Is it leftover from before?
Leftover, I'm trying to reopen the other budget, sorry.
That's okay. Are you looking, uh, for what? The open space budget?
No, I'm looking for, I don't think I have, I'm trying to find, I have it now, but I gotta rotate it. I, I, we have police and fire still.
Okay, no, okay. Okay, so is there any, anything else relative to, um, conservation budget?
My, my only question is just, are, is it okay if in the advisory, I sort of convey this, this sentiment that just conceptually, at least they're in support of of increased lead and hours.
Yeah, it sounds like it's a consensus of the board.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Okay, so next up, um, fire department, FY twenty-three budget and capital items. Chief Zach Ward, and I think Jeff next will be struggling with the thing there.
I got it, hang on.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Absolutely. I actually missed the first part of the conservation budget, budget. Did you want us to go line by line or did, did you just want us to answer questions? Um, I'm not sure how you want to do this.
Um, hi, what I, what I suggest, and people can do, you know, this is a bit over kind of free form here. People have presentations and so on like that. But I always encourage people to, you know, highlight the things that are major differences from previous years. That's really it. Uh, the standard thing some years we can look at and talk about and so on, but we've probably heard it before. But, um, highlight the significant differences. That's my recommendation.
Sure.
Is my screen showing now, Zach?
Yes, it is. Thank you. So we have two, what I would call major differences in our operating budget this year, and they're both in the, in the salaries, um, area. I'm actually going to start with the second one first. So we had the opportunity this past fall to sort of reevaluate where we were as a fire department and how many employees we needed. So, uh, up until October, we have three full-time forty-hour employees at the fire department. We had myself, um, the full-time fire lieutenant, which is Kristen Buckler. And we had an administrator and in the fall, um, the administrator left and it gave us uh, a good opportunity to, like I said, reevaluate where we were. Kristen and I got together and we analyzed all the functions that we do during the day at the fire department and what our skill sets were and, and basically how we could best manage, uh, both the budget and maybe where, where we could do some other investments in the, in the fire department budget. We made the decision that we wanted to cut that administrator position from forty hours per week to nineteen and a half. So sort of the opposite of the previous conversation we just had. We just felt like the forty hours was not, uh, necessary. Um, and we have been able to try out that nineteen and a half hours for probably a month and a half now. And it's, it's worked out quite nicely. Uh, we were able to hire a gentleman who's actually on the fire department to fill that role. It also gives us the opportunity to have another firefighter in the station when he's there. And, and that, that paid off just this past week. We had a call basically for a house fire on Maple Street on, uh, Tuesday. And it certainly helped with that daytime response, um, getting the engines there rapidly and, and knocking that fire down. So uh, that's just a brief description of that administrator line. Uh, do you want me to take questions on that particular line now before I move into the call firefighter stipends?
Um, now move right in and then I think we'll probably gather questions at the end.
Okay, so the call firefighter stipends, I think this is something that's truly long overdue for the Sherburne Fire Department. Um, as you know, we're, we're primarily an on-call fire department and our call firefighters are really the backbone of our fire coverage and fire response on a twenty-four seven basis. What we're looking to do is to compensate our call firefighters for some of their on-call time, or I should say all of their scheduled on-call time. Currently, our call firefighters are scheduled for a combined total between all of them of right around seventeen thousand hours per year. And they're not compensated for it. So we're look, what we're looking to do is to incentivize them a little bit, sort of a little bit of a retainer. Uh, we're looking to just, again, just some basic, uh, what I would consider small compensation for their time and for being committed to the town and being around when we need them. Um, it certainly helps us guarantee an initial response force, uh, for a lot of our emergencies. Just to give you an idea, um, we expect that the average active trained call firefighter, whether they're a trained firefighter or trained, uh, basically fire apparatus driver would make around one thousand to eleven hundred dollars per year through the system. One of our uh, neighboring towns pays out firefighter stipends at fifty-eight hundred per year, and they don't have any on-call time tied to it. So we did look at some comparables of just where we're at. And again, you, we're not looking to make this a, uh, an expensive operation here. I just think it is something that's long overdue. Um, it's a little, thank you honestly, uh, for everything that they do and, and that time that they cover. It is a significant amount of time. It's, they basically cover fifty percent of every single day. They start an on-call shift at six PM and it ends at six AM. They rotate every sixth night. Um, so we have six groups of, uh, five or six basically, and that, that's what that would cover.
Okay. Is it, so that's, that's what I'm sure. So that's a little, okay, the major differences. Okay, I'll take questions. Not, this, I want to make sure, Jeff, is that hand raised from before or is that a new hand raised?
I can't even see hands.
Okay.
Before, sorry.
Okay, so Paul does have the hand raise. Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Uh, first I want to thank the chief for the excellent job that is happening at the fire department. The, uh, fantastic, uh, things we've seen, like the putting out the fire on the railcar, the, uh, the house fires, the, so many times, uh, you guys have come through for our community. I want to thank the chief and every member of the department for, for being there for us. Hooray for all you guys. Big shout out for, for all of you. I wanted to make sure that we're in compliance with the Fair Labor Standards Act, which you may recall, we had an audit done a few years ago. And we were told that whenever people are assigned shifts and they have to be available during those shifts, they have to be compensated. And, uh, anything that goes over forty hours, they have to be compensated on that, that basis too. So while you're putting together the schedule, uh, I want to be sure that maybe you've run it by council or made sure that you're in compliance with all of those requirements. It's, it's not a pleasant thing to have the United States basically come in and pay a visit, do an audit and decide that you owe money. And it's all easily dealt with by having a lawyer take a look at it.
So, Mr. Durans, we have not had counsel look at this, uh, just based on some of the things that I've learned. Um, I'm actually a member of the Massachusetts Fire Chiefs Call and Volunteer Committee. And that committee a couple of years ago produced a report. And in that report, um, it stated that we were not required to compensate for on-call time. Now I know what you're referring to for the on-call time. That was in relation to the ambulance. And as you may recall, uh, Mr. Durans, I believe at that time, people were working on call shifts. They were labeled as on-call shifts, but they were being required to stay at the station. So they, they were being required to be present in the building and, and technically working hour per hour. Do you, I don't know if you may recall that, those details. Um, and I think that's what triggered that FLSA thing. I, I'd be more than happy to discuss these with, with council. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I don't say that we lose anything by talking to council and everything may be fine. I'm not saying it's, it's not fine, but having been burnt once with this and having to have to deal with, as I said, the United States before on this. I don't want to have that again for this community.
No, thank you. And thank you for your remarks. Seriously.
Okay, um, I see George next.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, Zach, I just want to say, um, kind of reiterate what Paul said, but just on budget making to, it's, it's refreshing to see somebody come in and say, we don't need a forty-hour employee. It only needs to be nineteen and a half instead of the other way around. It's, it's great to be realistic and say, this is all we need. That's very helpful when it comes to town budgets overall. I, I, I really applaud you for that. Um, I did have one quick question, and this may not be for you, it may be for Deb. Um, the, you have an IT services line for eighteen thousand dollars. I thought we'd moved all IT to a separate budget and I don't know if Diane or Deb.
I can actually answer that if you'd like.
Okay, yeah.
So we're in the process collectively of doing that. This number very well may come down and though, and whatever funds come, come out of this budget, we go into that IT budget. We're still in the process, we're meeting next week of determining what items that would, that would cover. Most of our IT costs for the fire department, our fire department specific IE software that we use for our operation. So I don't think those items would go into that town IT budget, but more general things, computers, Microsoft Office, suites, emails, stuff like that.
Okay.
Um, any other questions? So just, I'm, I'm just trying to look through the line items here and I have trouble, um, seeing on the screen.
If I could blow it up, hang on, hang on.
No, no, I, I'm fine with the zoom level. I'm fine with the zoom level. I wouldn't change the zoom level. It's just that stipend thing. What was the total amount? Was like twenty thousand dollar difference? There now. Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's less than the reduction of thirty thousand dollars of the admin. So it's overall net reduction. Can't complain about that. And I get what you're saying there about the, um, you know, it's a different world, um, now than it was even twenty years ago. Forget fifty years ago when I was growing up here. You know, volunteer fire departments and so on like that. And I think we've done what very well, um, with the, you know, while keeping it affordable as well with the fire department over the years. So I certainly, I support this. Be interested in other people's thoughts. Yeah, Paul, you have a hand raised.
Yes, I just wanted to say that now that everybody has spoken that we're not taking votes because some of us think that that's not right time to do. We should see the whole picture. But as far as I'm concerned, I support this budget and support what you're trying to do and agree with the idea of, of more stipend and more incentive as you outlined. So I'm on board.
Okay, very good. Um, any other thoughts? Okay, I mean, it does sound like I think you have the consensus of the board. This as well, like, um, as we just previously discussed, we're going to, um, uh, what do you call them? You know, vote at the end of the budget cycle to look at things holistically. And I thank you for the effort you put into this act as well thought out.
I really appreciate that, uh, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And thank you to the entire board for the support. You know, I, a lot of really good investments have been made in the fire department in the last two years. And if any of yous were interested, I could, I could tell you how they've all paid off in detail, every single one of them for some of the things that we've had happen in town, in this town in the last two years. So I thank all of yous, all of you for the support, honestly. Um, did you want to talk about capital?
Um, yeah, yeah, it's on the agenda. Absolutely.
Um, so I was going to do a PowerPoint presentation, but then I looked at the agenda. Um, and I said, you know, I, I didn't want to get into a, a huge detailed talk because I can go on and on with some of these things. So I was just I, I talked to, with Diane. Uh, we just decided we're just going to do like a brief overview, if you don't mind, of our two capital items. Um, so we're requesting, as you may recall, a couple of years ago, we got a grant for self-contained breathing apparatus. The uh, air packs that our firefighters wear for hundred and forty-seven thousand. That only replaced three quarters of all of our air packs. And we're, we're coming back to the town to request the funds to purchase the other twenty-five percent of those. That would be eight air packs for a total cost of about sixty-four thousand dollars. Uh, for a number of reasons. Right now, we're using air packs that are basically two different models and two different N F P A standards. They have two different safety features. It's quite challenging for a department like ours when a firefighter puts on an air pack and they might have different safety features. Um, so that, that's basically the, the brief description of that request. And then as, as you all may know, we have a U T V, which is a utility terrain vehicle that we respond into places like the Rocky Narrows with and, and other conservation uh, areas in town, either mostly to remove injured or sick persons from the woods if they're hiking and they, and they fall and they, and they hurt themselves. Or if they have things like chest pain. The other big use that we have that for is for brush fires uh, deep in the woods. So the U T V that we have um, is approximately eleven years old. And we've been having some significant uh, mechanical issues with that U T V. And we're looking uh, to replace it for, for a cost of around thirty-one thousand dollars. That thirty-one thousand dollars by the vehicle, our Fire and Rescue Association has committed to uh, donating uh, approximately eight thousand dollars for the equipment for that vehicle to, to serve that purpose of, of transporting patients out of the woods. Um, and that's again, just a really brief description of our two capital requests.
Okay, any questions relative to the capital requests for Zach?
Here.
Yeah, Paul.
I, I think we should, when we consider that the capital request, consider the fact that the fire department has been very diligent in pursuing grants whenever possible. And it's, it's an amazing thing to me that almost every time that the, the fire chief shows up for a meeting, he also asks us to accept gifts, accept grants. There's been a, a, a good steady stream of, of uh, trying to find what money is available. And therefore I would assume that and ask him to verify that he's looked diligently to see whether or not there was a way to get someone else to pay for the uh, two capital items that he mentioned. And I bet you he'll say he's done that and that there wasn't anything available. Is that a fair statement, Zach?
That is, and, and as you, I think as you well know, I, we're going to put in for the air packs again in the assistance of firefighters grant last year. We didn't think we would get them and we put in for the jaws of life and we actually got the jaws of life. They actually went into service today, by the way, the, the new jaws of life.
Oh, good. That's good.
On the trucks. Um, so, um, in the U T V, unfortunately, in all the grant programs that we can apply for, that wasn't a um, eligible item. So we did, we did certainly look into that.
And uh, I'm sorry if I missed it. What's the value of this, uh, the capital request?
So the, the air packs um, are right around sixty-four thousand and the U T V uh, is around thirty-one thousand.
Okay, very good. All right, any other questions? Okay. Thank you again, Chief Ward, and uh, look forward to seeing you at our marathon meeting we do at advisory.
Thank you very much.
You're going to see him in the next agenda item in a minute. My friend.
Oh, that is true. But next one up on this here is uh, the final of our budget things is the Police Chief Department, F Y twenty-three Budget Capital Items, Chief Thomas Galvin.
All right, good evening. I will uh, try and get through this for the first time and uh, we'll see it. And I want to give Zach some credit. So as he did say, he had a PowerPoint presentation. He called me about an hour before this and asked me if I had anything. And I, I don't think he wanted to show me up this year, so. Um, so we, we do have some changes this year. I will, I will be honest with you. It's, it's two and a half months since I started. Um, so I'm still every day learning about our budget, how it's come to be. Um, but some of the things I do want to address uh, in the next year, um, really revolve around liability and retention. Um, I think Jeff, you, you kind of spoke to retention earlier and the cost of having that revolving door um, and what that can do to us. And uh, I, I think you've seen historically and, and unfortunately, that is something that has plagued us uh, at the police department. Uh, we actually had two officers that were hired in December of twenty twenty, um, that have both since left and moved on. Um, so it's something that we need to address and we really need to, to correct. Um, because I think the elephant in the room with the police department budget always is uh, is overtime and the overages that we see in overtime. So there's a few things that we're going to do to hopefully um, address that as we move forward. Um, and there's actually some things that are not yet reflected in this budget that, that may come to fruition before we finish this budget process this year. Um, so I will, I'll go into that as I kind of go through. Um, so what I'll say is we start with salaries, um, is much of this is an estimate. Um, the contract with the police union expires June thirtieth, um, so we will be entering into negotiations for a successor agreement. Um, but this is kind of what we put together based on other raises that are coming for, for the next fiscal year. And uh, you know, we, we may have to revisit um, some of this. Um, but the major changes that you'll find through salaries, um, one is a new position, um, and that would be a police department administrative assistant. Um, it's a nineteen and a half hour position, um, kind of falling on the same lines of the administrative assistant that falls under the fire department. Um, I've already gone through and revamped the job description and met with personnel about that. Um, but it, it really is, as we kind of look, and I, I think I'm fortunate that we don't have someone in that position right now. Um, there was a position there in the past for the police department, but it's really given me the ability to dive deep into things that I really learn as I'm moving forward. Um, but I think as we do move forward with where we stand with police reform and the added uh, requirements of documentation on, on police departments, it's going to be necessary position. Um, again, it's not going to be a benefited position. It's, it's going to be a nineteen and a half hour position. And I really think that's going to serve us well and be able to provide that, that assistance uh, that we need on, on just some of the, the normal weekly and daily tasks uh, that we're going to have to do. Um, the other addition in, under salaries, um, addresses some of the liability issues and that would be adding an additional sergeant. And that's about a ten thousand dollar cost. Um, the way we are structured right now, um, currently we have lieutenant's position and two sergeants. Um, in this current year's budget, there is a, a third sergeant's position that has yet to be filled. Um, the, the thought was they were going to wait for the new chief to arrive in order to fill that position. And uh, we're actually revamping that, the sergeant's job description right now. And then that uh, position will be posted and we'll uh, we'll have a promotional process shortly. Um, so the reason for the fourth position is kind of as, as we lay out our shifts. Um, and we don't have constant supervision across all the shifts. We use an officer in charge situation now where it varies. It varies from day to day, from shift to shift. And there's really no consistency. Um, so what we'd be looking to do is have regularly established sergeants um, on all three shifts. There would also then be a split shift or some combination of split shifts. And that would leave two shifts unfilled without a, a direct supervisor and those shifts would then be covered by the lieutenant position. Um, so it really does a way of, of us covering and putting supervision over all of our shifts. Um, I really think that's going to do a better service to the town and, and make sure and really provide some consistency to the officers that work the shifts. It's very difficult um, to have one senior officer that kind of manages shift one day and then it's another senior officer the next day. And there really are, are different expectations by those people. And I, I think that can put us into some difficult situations in the, in the, in the future. Um, the other changes uh, under salaries have to do with uh, longevity, E M T stipend. We have an additional E M T so that increases the E M T stipend. And then we, fortunately, we have a, a few officers that are, are increasing in their longevity, hitting over the five-year mark, over the ten-year mark, the fifteen-year mark, which, which, you know, speaks to retention that we do have uh, an age group of officers that have uh, remained. So we'll have some additions there. Um, the one thing that stands out in our budget is we have currently three positions budgeted for dispatchers. Um, and, and that's really where the potential future change may come. Um, so there was a, a hiring process before my arrival to try and bring in some dispatchers. Uh, unfortunately, throughout the process, they only had one viable candidate who then didn't pass a background investigation. Um, we have not re-advertised, um, as we're, we're looking at the potential for regional dispatch. Um, so that's, that's really what could lead to some significant changes to this budget in future. Um, we have uh, been part of a regional study with us, five of our neighboring communities. And uh, we're going to have some information, a draft report coming on the nineteenth and a final report, I believe, on the twenty-fifth. Uh, but actually, in the meantime, Chief Ward and I will be visiting uh, two regional dispatch centers, one uh, in the town of Holbrook and the other in the town of Foxborough. Um, so there's a couple of potential outcomes to the, the study. One would be that we form a regional dispatch center with some of our neighbors. Um, that, that's a great alternative, um, but it's probably something that ultimately be two, three years down the road to get it off the ground, get it built out and started. Or what's more likely to happen is a recommendation to join one of the already existing centers. Um, so I'll have some more information on that in the future. And it's something that we would have to have a greater discussion about and uh, and have a discussion with the community about because it could change kind of the way our services look a little bit. I think ultimately in the end for the public, it's not going to be a great change. Um, it, it's actually probably going to be more consistent because the way things work currently, it's similar to what I talked about with supervision. Um, it's not the same people every day on the desk. Um, it's, you know, the, the police officers cover the desk, whether it's one day in their rotation, two days in their rotation. It's not, it's not kind of, I guess, what they signed up to do. Um, so they do a good job. Um, but I think there's room for improvement. Um, yeah, we actually had a discussion today at three o'clock. Uh, you know, Chief Ward mentioned uh, fire the other day and, and they've been quite busy. And that, that's one of the things where we really find some difficulties on the fire end of dispatch. Um, the police and, the police officers deliver it every day. So on the fire end, there, there's just the, the terminology and there's things that are very, very different where with professional dispatches, we'll get a lot more consistency and a better product um, ultimately for, for those fire calls. So that's really where our differences stay on the uh, on the salary end. Um, are there any questions that you'd like me to answer on that to begin with?
I see uh, George has a question.
Yeah, I do. Thanks. Uh, thank you, Chief Galvin. Um, thank you for addressing, uh, one of my questions before you even started getting into it was about that regional dispatch, which you and I have discussed. But, um, so this, just to clarify, the salary line item does still include those dispatchers that are not actually in the department at, at.
Correct, because what, what would happen is if, if we didn't move forward with a regional dispatch, and we don't know what the assessment would be for that yet. Um, we would actually then re-advertise and try and hire and fill for those positions.
Right, right. So you have them in the budget. My other point in this, I know this is probably putting you in a weird spot, but um, like, when we were, last year when we increased the um, salaries or we've talked about it over the last few years, the point was to reduce, we've talked about this too, the overtime line item. And I see last year we did reduce the budget down to one ninety-two, but I see we've already spent a hundred and forty-seven thousand to date. Does that, does that have to do with dispatch? Like, I, I just don't see that our overtime has been addressed, even though we have hired additional staff.
Right, and, and that, yeah, that, that is part of it. Because, because what happens now is uh, a regular shift is staffed with three officers, one on the desk and two on the road. So that a, anytime someone takes time off or is out or we're shorthanded because of a lack of people, um, we're covering those shifts with overtime. Plus, we have other overtime through the year because of court and training and some other things. Um, but what, especially if we were to get the dispatchers in there or we were to transition to a, to a regional model, um, you know, we would have a police officer take a day off and we would no longer have to backfill that first person taking the day off. So that's, that's another huge benefit of the, the potential regionalization is we would save on that initial backfill. Um, and we, we should see a significant drop in the overtime. Or I should say, we should stay within budget at least.
All right, the, thank you. Yeah, because I just, I know when we talked about all these additional positions in the last few years, I know you weren't here to be part of that, but we talked about the fact that overtime was going to continually go down, but I see that last year, yeah, it went down from three ninety to forty-five, which was a big decrease. And then we budgeted for even a, for one ninety-two, but it looks like we're going to blow that out of the water.
Right. Yeah, and I, and I think part of that problem is, is we're not fully staffed right. Um, that, that if we were fully staffed, we would be seeing, hopefully seeing some of a reduction. And if we had filled those added positions in dispatch, the difficult thing about hiring dispatchers right now, and I actually had a, a discussion with a, with a colleague who's a dispatch supervisor and, and another community that's trying to hire two people right now. Um, they've actually had an advertisement out for over two weeks and they've received zero applications. Um, so the people that are applying for those jobs right now just aren't there. Um, so the, the regional model really wi- will help uh, in a lot of ways.
Well, and, and as you said to me when we talked about this before, we're not offering, I, I think probably these regional dispatch centers are offering more money than we would offer as a town. So you're competing against, you're competing against something that we're never going to compete with.
Right, and, and not only that, they, they're able to offer a career. There's advancement, supervisory positions. There's a lot of different things when you get into a larger setup like that.
Exactly.
I just want to say something real quick before I recognize anyone else. But if you look at the two salary items, regular salaries and overtime, well, we're one hundred thousand dollars on track to be one hundred thousand dollars over budget for overtime. We're in track to be two hundred thousand dollars um, under budget on straight salaries. So I think that goes to what I think Chief Calvin just said there about, you know, we hadn't filled those positions. That's why we're under track on that. So we're, we're actually
Okay.
if everything projects out just between the salaries, it should be actually a hundred thousand dollars under budget.
Right.
One other, one other, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to do the order. People have their hands up.
Yeah, I didn't raise my hand.
What, is it something really quick relative to what I just said?
I'll get in line, but the high share my screen. I can't see the line, George.
All right, Paul, go ahead, please.
Hi, uh, Chief, uh, thank you for being here with the town of Sherburne. Delighted that you have joined us and are working on making our department even better. I had two comments. The, the first is that for years I've been very uh, much of an advocate for E M T training for police officers. Because when an incident occurs and, and this an injured, injury involved, it's usually the police who are there first. And the fire department and, and their rescue operation usually comes second. And the difference in time between the time that the police are there and the time that the rescuers there often can make a difference of life or death. And therefore, the more E M Ts you have in your department, so it could be just an ordinary uh, traffic stop or it could be an accident. Some guy, single car accident hits a tree and you discover. And you discover the reason why he hit a tree is because he's having a heart attack. And if you're EMT trained, you can start to do things right there rather than having to wait for the ambulance to arrive and the EMTs to jump out of that vehicle and come to rescue somebody. I know you're going to say, well, we're all we're all trained on on using the machines. Trying to think of the name of them. Yeah, the defibrators, but nevertheless, having more EMTs, the more EMTs, I think, the better off the department is. So I wanted to encourage you to provide a meaningful incentive to all your officers to become EMT trained. The other point I would make is that two of the towns that I represent as town council are are members of the the two dispatch groups that you mentioned. So I am familiar with the one located in Foxborough, and I'm familiar with the one that's in Holbrook and have some knowledge about how they work and operate. And I wanted to say that they are, in my mind, from the information that I've received, quite effective in 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 several key ways. Number one, the state is providing a lot of funding. So with that funding, that offsets a lot of the costs for setting these things up and sort of underwrites the communities. And that that funding originally was anticipated to be only sort of startup cost, but the funding has been fairly continuous. So I see a regional association as a way of getting some financial support for our taxpayers, if you will. And secondly, one of the nice things about professional dispatchers who do the job all day long, week after week and year after year, is that they are very good at things. And things that you wouldn't expect, like like a woman was pregnant and having a baby, and she couldn't make it to the hospital on time. And if you had somebody who knows about having a baby and can guide things along by phone until people arrive at the scene. These are things that are not related to to criminal activity and law enforcement per se. But it's it's amazing the things that that good professional dispatchers can do. And they develop a skill and a rapport with people that the occasional dispatcher that you you kind of assign, you know, we don't have anybody to cover the desk today, so you're going to do dispatch today. That that kind of person is so far different from what I've seen these regional centers do that I think is well worth the time getting involved regionally. Not only because of the benefits to the taxpayers, but also because of the quality that these dispatchers provide. So I would encourage you to pursue either one or both, the the Holbrook one and the Foxborough one are both. In my view, the reports I've gotten, good, solid places.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you. And and just to comment quickly, where you mentioned EMTs, I mean, I come from a system where, you know, when I first started, half my officers were EMTs. So I definitely see the benefit and to continue to encourage our officers to pursue that level of of training. And and just on the the regional dispatch and, you know, you definitely touched on a key component of that is some of the economic value. One agency in in the Commonwealth that is not struggling for money is State 911. And, you know, in my previous department, you know, we received about $30,000 in 911 incentive money per year. And then we joined a regional center, and that center included seven communities. You know, our our regional center, after we had combined, was receiving over $800,000 a year in State 911 money. So an exponential increase. And it really, the equipment it provided to the community and upgrades, it it really is, it's it's amazing what the state is willing to do with a combination of resources because it significantly cuts their costs, because they supply a lot of equipment to municipalities to run the 911 system. So when they're able to cut their costs and their maintenance costs and their long-term equipment costs, you know, they they do incentivize it for communities to join these regional centers.
Okay, thank you very much. And Paul, if you could put your hand down, please. Marian. Okay, sorry, muted, yeah.
Somebody mutes me. For good reason. When you are looking into these regional centers, how, I think it's a no-brainer, absolutely a very good thing to do. But how long does it take to get up and running in a regional center? How soon can we have that in place? And then I have another couple of questions. You might want to just answer these all at once.
So I guess that varies. If we were to combine with neighboring communities and build out our own center, I would put that probably conservatively at a two and a half to three-year mark. So probably not the best avenue. With with an already existing center, I will tell you that when when we signed on in the town of Berlin, it was an existing center, but it was early on, and we signed on at the same time as another community. So that plays a lot into it if other communities want to join at the same time. But it took us about a year. And that's because because as the two communities joined, we were the second one. But if we were the first community to get on and and a center was ready to onboard us, we could probably realistically be onboard in six to nine months.
So it's a matter of forming a new a new group rather than joining in a center that already exists.
Well, i- if we formed a new group, it's going to take much longer because there's a lot of planning.
About joining one of the existing.
But it is it existing center, we could potentially, if we were the first in line to to be joining and onboard, it could be potentially shorter six to nine months.
Right, so that's great. I had another sort of training question. I know in the past, I haven't followed this in detail, but I do remember discussions from the the former police chief about how much training is required every year to keep current. And it's it's required by the state. You don't have a choice, and it costs money. And I can't see where in the budget you have that, those costs.
So so we actually have training. There's a there's a line item for specifically for training in the expenses. I was going to go through the expenses separately. You know, we're budgeting $23,000 for for training, and that's only the course cost. So we do, we do training in a few different ways. So we have, as you said, there's a lot of mandatory training. And it's actually expanded just in this past year with police reform. And so there's there's 40 hours of of classroom training that our officers are doing every year, and that's legal updates. And then they have different subjects with the the municipal police training community comes up with each year that are that are mandated for our officers' training. We also need to train three times a year in firearms. So we're actually twice a year, we're going to the range and physically shooting. And then we're we're trying now, and we're going to implement some some actually some some laser technology with some training firearms that we can do it in the hallways at the station, so we're not expending additional funds on ammunition, because that that's really becomes a big cost when we look at the training line for our firearms training. We also carry tasers, and there's a recertification process and an expense for that. And and that's just the mandatory training, so that's doing the bare minimum. And that's one of the problems with having such a, you know, an overextended overtime budget that we can't do more training and and more career development and growth for our officers. Being short-staffed and and, you know, our expenses on that end are going towards shift coverage. It's not going towards growing our people and and putting them in a better position and and putting them on a stronger career path. So I think that speaks also to retention. That if the training's not available, that or or we can't make it available, that they're going to seek it out somewhere else. I actually sent and one officer to training about a month ago. And he did a he did a regional drill at the Natick Mall that they did for active shooter, and then he went to a one-day training class. And he came back and he said, other than in-service, those are the first two trainings I've been to in seven years. I think that's a failure on our part as a police department. That that we need to, in order to have the best people, they need to be up to date on a lot of those latest techniques above and beyond what the state just mandates as a minimum.
Right, and that costs time as well, which other people have to fill in. So does that, is is that now including training in handling mental health emergencies?
So that is part of it. That's that's a big part of our in-service. One of the things that's covered in our our expense budget, it's currently now it's labeled as other expenses, and I I guess maybe I can start to go through the expenses as well. But we actually have a mental health clinician on staff. So we have a regional mental health clinician we share with the town of Hawkington and the town of Holliston. And so yeah, it's an incredible benefit that we have. And and we're very lucky that we're that we're able to do that, but, you know, we have, she she spends one day a week with us. So yes, there is a lot of training above and beyond for for mental health resources for the officers. It's a mandated part of our training right now for in-service, but there are there are a few things and some crisis intervention intervention training that I would like to be able to send people to. It's just not currently feasible. It's actually through the International Association of Chiefs of Police. It's called the One Mind Campaign. And, you know, that's not something that we haven't been able to take care of. But what that is, is basically a pledge that you you're going to take. Initially, it's 25% of your officers and have them trained in crisis intervention. And, you know, unfortunately, a big portion of our job is seeing people on their worst day. And, you know, for the officers to have additional training and that to de-escalate those situations. We just had one two days ago that I was at with a couple of officers and our clinician, where we spent over an hour just talking. Where years ago, that probably would have been an incident that we would have been hands-on, probably would have turned into a pig pile, and it would have been ugly. And and the reality is, is the person didn't need to be arrested. They needed to be hospitalized and get help. And fortunately, with the resources we had, you know, we had minimal physical interaction, and we were able to get them in an ambulance and get them the treatment they needed.
Yeah, that's great. I was just looking for more opportunities for regionalization, and I thought that might be one of them.
So there actually is one other regional opportunity I'm entering into discussions with, and that is our animal control function. So currently, we have a police officer that serves as a quasi-animal control officer. It it's really a it's a lost opportunity, and I've had some brief discussions with the town clerk about it, and we need to have some deeper discussion because licensing becomes an issue and enforcement of licensing. I mean, it's really not something that is working very well. And the town of Holliston has has been partnered for years with Ashland, and they've kind of been pushed out. Ashland's become too busy and really needs to go on their own, but Holliston's looking for a partner. So actually, I got an email today from the the Holliston Police Chief, and that's something that discussion that we're going to begin and looking at some some regional opportunity in that. And and that's something that there could be some grant funding through, especially if we're starting up a new program, something through the community compact that we may be able to apply for some grant funding from the state in order to get it off the ground.
Oh, great. Thank you.
So would you like me to kind of continue and move through the expenses as as they are?
Yeah, and like I said, highlight highlight the major differences.
Yeah, so major differences, again, kind of, again, go back to liability and retention. And there's a couple of things. You'll see some minor changes on, and and that has to do with the development of potentially the IT budget. And then some some line items I combined because it some of it didn't make sense. We had a phone and internet line item that if we're going to move our internet costs to the town IT budget, we were paying internet costs for our in-car computers. But we've combined that we had two separate vendors for cellular service, one for phones and one for data. That's been combined into one bill, so that would be moved under that, all under that cell phone line item. And even with moving those together with the combination of just one vendor, we're going to reduce that overall line item anyways. But the big changes come in kind of in our other expenses line, and and that's really more of a contract services line, because that's where we pay our clinician out of, but would be for police accreditation. So Mr. Durentis, you may be very familiar with this, as I I saw some old emails from years ago in town. Back in 2000, the town actually joined the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission and basically became a member to attain accreditation. There was some correspondence I found in a file about two from 2005 that talked about the the board bringing it up again, and the police department was still working on it. It's now 2022, and it's never been accomplished. So to to do this, there's a couple of things I'm looking at. One is there's fees to join MPAC, which is the Mass Police Accreditation. So that includes increases our dues and membership line. Even with that, through MYA, the town's insurer, there's a there's about a one-third reimbursement for those fees, and they they do that reimbursement for three years. And if you're able to obtain accreditation within three years, those those reimbursements for your fees are and membership are perpetual. But what I'm doing is is also in the in that other expense line is is looking at working with a consulting group that's made up of retired accreditation managers from departments across the Commonwealth that will assist us through the accreditation process. It's it's very common to start it. It it looks good, and if you if you were to go to the the Mass Police Accreditation website, they have a list that shows the accredited departments, the the departments that are certified because it's a two-level system. And then those that are in what we call self-assessment. And there's departments that have been in self-assessment for 10, 15 years, and they never reached that level. So my my goal is to to reach that level in three years. But for that, we need some help. And to have people that have gone through the process and able to push the process through, you know, it's going to provide be a huge benefit to us. Because as we stand right now, the majority of our policies are are 10, 10 years old. You know, we need to revamp them all. There's there's a lot that we're going to need to add. You know, there's some that we need to change. You know, we should have changed yesterday, and that I have drafts on my desk because of police reform, they were required to be changed back in July, and that hasn't been done yet. So, you know, that's it's about a $9,900 expense. And in that, I would look at that as being about a three-year expense, that, you know, we would have that on the on the budget for three years, and then it would drop off as we are able to attain that level of accreditation. You know, it's 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 kind of daunting when we look at it in the beginning. But I think with this help, and if we're able to get to to full staff, and then again, have that administrative position, we're going to be able to push through, get things in place. One benefit, because it sometimes becomes a collective bargaining issue, moving towards accreditation. That's something that's already been addressed in our police contract, so that we would not have a problem as we moved move forward with that.
Okay. Very good. Paul, do you still have a question, or is that the hand left over before?
No, I I just wanted to fill the chief in on this accreditation business. Originally, when I first became a selectman, it seems like 100 years ago. The police department was in the basement of Town Hall, and the quarters were quite bad. And I had talked then with the existing department about accreditation. And the obstacle to accreditation was the physical condition of the police facilities. We simply couldn't meet the standards of accreditation. So we embarked on a program to build a new police station, which is the police station that's currently in use. But we obtained a commitment that there would be accreditation within, I think, five years. And that the police department would work diligently as part of the the deal, if you will, for select boards fight for the new police station. We did the fight. The fight was successful. The voters supported the new police station, new police station get built. And then after the five-year period, we had a meeting, and we said, what's happened with accreditation? And then we were told it was a lot harder than we thought. There was more paperwork than we thought. There was too many other issues going on. We were short-staffed. There was more paperwork than we thought, there was too many other issues going on, we were short-staffed. We had to deal with, uh, you know, ongoing law enforcement issues that are, was occurring in the community. They needed more time, so you're corrected, here we are twenty-two years later. We don't have accreditation, yet the reason why we have the police station. Is because there is a commitment to the voters, to town meeting, to. The police department, to the union. To everybody involved, that accreditation would be obtained. As soon as possible. So, I mentioned all this because I think all these issues have already been decided. And they were decided like twenty years ago. And that is that the community does need to get accredited. The policies that we had then were outdated and as a lawyer, reading some of them back then, they were. They might as well have been entitled liability or. How to, to, uh, end up, uh, violating somebody's civil rights. They had to be updated. We have to have current policies, we have to have effective, uh, tools for our police department. And all the members of the police department to know what is right thing to do and what is. Wrong and what the courts have said are, are not permissible and what the legislature has said is not permissible, so. Please do this accreditation.
Absolutely, and one thing that, that I would commit to do is, is, um, gi- give you more of a, a, a update more frequently. I think that twenty-two years is a bit of time to get an update. Um, and, and, you know, that I would commit every few months to kind of, kind of show you where we are along the process. Uh, because the way the process would work is, you know, we would, we would start in self-assessment. Um, and I can tell you our assessment would be dismal with our policies as they stand. Um, and then we would move within that first year to become certified, which is a certain, uh, which is about two-thirds of the, uh. The standards would need to be met for the full accreditation. Um, and then after we're certified for a year, we'd be eligible to, uh, to apply for, for accreditation. Um, I, I think it's more than reasonable to think that we can get this done in three years. Um, and that, that it's, it would be a benefit. Um, because as you said, it's, you know, to, to make sure we're doing things the right way. Um, but also this, this is an outside evaluation, proving that we're doing things the right way. Um, it's very easy to live in a bubble and look at our policies and say they're great and say we're doing things well. Um, but to take a neutral party, to have them come in from the outside and review what we're doing. I mean, it's really gonna show that we're living, you know, and, and we're living up to the best practices. Um, and in, in this day and age and what we've seen and the, the police reform and the things that are continuing to come down. Um, we're gonna be negligent if we don't accomplish this.
Okay, thank you. Um, actually Paul, if you put your hand down, that'd be great. Um, any other questions, questions particularly about the, um, expense items that we see just presented to us? Okay. Well, very good, and, um, so this overall summary, it looks like the expenses are just gonna be up a net five percent. And with the six percent of salaries, about was it six point two eight overall budget increase? And that's largely, the only question I had, it's actually back to salaries. Um, just confirming and I'm, I'm quite sure, looking at the numbers, but the new sergeant position, the fourth, the third sergeant position. That's a new position, you're not converting one of the patrol positions, is that correct?
No, oh no, it's a convert, it's just a patrol officer that would be, uh, converted to a.
Okay.
It's not a new body that would come in the door.
Oh, okay.
So, that's all. Okay, and then lastly, there'd be one capital item. Um, and that would be just, um, the replacement of a, a six-year-old police cruiser. Um, and that would be just over fifty-five thousand dollars as it stands with estimates we've gotten today. Um, it would be about fifty-five thousand, one hundred dollars. Um, I'm actually a little disappointed as I come with this. Um, my hope had been to go with a, uh, a hybrid model. Um, we were actually looking at replacing one of our SUVs, um, with a, uh, patrol-rated pickup truck. Um, that's kind of one of the things we lack, um, is the ability when we have things to move around, you know, we go to the range and do our firearms. Um, we're loading targets and other, you know, some big heavy steel items into per, people's personal vehicles. Um, we are, you know, if we're picking up bulk items, whether it be a bicycle or something that we're, property we're recovering. Um, you know, we're trying to fit them into a, a patrol vehicle that we've already put equipment in. Um, that make it very difficult to utilize all of that space, you know, you'd think we have SUVs that the space allows it, it's really not set up to do that. Um, with the cages we have and the other things that are in there for prisoner transport, it doesn't allow us to fold seats down. Um, so we, we'd be actually be able to have a fully equipped patrol vehicle that's a pickup truck. Um, my hope had been to do, uh, to have it as a hybrid model. Um, as they, as that's available through Ford. Um, unfortunately, based on what's going on with the, uh, the auto industry this year. The orders for, um, new patrol vehicles, um, for next year, um, actually closed in September. Um, so we couldn't even get in and order that model. Um, fortunately, the, the gas models are still kind of the, the norm in policing and, uh. What happens is the, the outfitters and, and the dealerships order stock of that, so we'd be able to get a stock model. Um, versus doing a, a special order for the hybrid model. Um, but my hope is, as we look at our fleet overall, is to start to take advantage of some, uh, some of these alternative, uh, alternative fuel vehicles to try and, uh. Try and reduce our fuel usage and, uh, and be more efficient as we move forward.
Yeah, no, that'd be great, that'd definitely be great. I think California would even have a Tesla, uh, police vehicles.
There, there are a few.
Yeah, are definitely. I'll also be curious to see what the, uh, what the wait time is, as right now, just regular civilian, civilian vehicles are, are difficult to get. And showrooms are, um, shut down, so I'll be curious, uh, these custom vehicles or police vehicles, if they're the same way.
Yeah, they put it at about twenty-six weeks right now.
Okay, half a year, yeah. All right, um, any other questions? I'm assuming Paul's hand is left, um, up from before, oh, no, I guess not, uh, yeah, Paul, go ahead.
I wanted to comment on the capital. I think it's very important that we go to, uh, hybrid or all-electric as soon as possible and. In support of that, I would say that, um. The latest engineering is demonstrating some pretty good torque on these vehicles. They actually can accelerate pretty good and, uh. Do what police vehicles are supposed to be doing. Whereas a few years ago. It wasn't as clear, that hybrid vehicles are, or all electric vehicles. Would have the kind of power that was necessary to. Apprehend criminals, put it that way. Uh, but I think the technology is there. I think environmentally and with climate change and all that stuff going on. That we as a community need to be leaders on this and therefore, uh. We should be doing everything we can to plan for and. Convert as many vehicles as possible to electric, either all-electric or partial electric. So number one, I commend you for your comments. I would encourage you to go further and do what's necessary to get. This purchase to be an electrical vehicle.
I, I will, I will continue to explore the alternatives and see what's out there. Um, but, but definitely, and I, I think you, you know, to echo what you said. Yeah, the, the technology is there, I think it's been there longer than we want to admit. It's really in policing, it's changing the mindset. Um, you know, that, you know, we've always gone, it has to be these large, powerful, um, V-eight engines to, to do what we need to do, where the, the alternatives that are out there. And I think to present, be presenting my budget, uh, you know, following the, the Conservation, uh, Commission, you know, it really, it speaks to that, that we need to do more. Um, and be better and, and be more open to the, the alternatives that are out there.
Okay. Um, any other questions, George?
Yeah, I, um, a couple of things, uh. Um, oh, I just lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. Uh, I wanna talk about budgets in general one more time before we end the discussion. But, uh, I think for, um. Chief Galvin. Is this a year that we could actually budget for going regional for dispatch or do we have to keep the budget as it is? And hope that we get, I mean, what's the timing on going regionalization?
I, I would say, give me two weeks and I can have a better answer for you. Um, because we're gonna do the eighteenth and the twenty-fourth, we're gonna do a couple of site visits. It will allow, uh, those conversations to happen with the directors of those centers to see what their availability is. Um, I know that they're willing to take people on, I just don't know when. Um, so I'll have a better timeframe and I'll also have a better understanding of what, uh, their assessments are and what the costs are. So I will, uh, my, my, uh, I think planning-wise, I will be back in front of you for an appointment of a new officer at your next meeting. Um, so that, uh, I can hopefully discuss some of those things then as well.
Great, so yeah, that's, that's kind of my point on these budgets that, you know. We still have opportunity to change this if he gets more information between now and the next month or so.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, uh, anything else, uh, for Chief Galvin? Yeah, Paul?
Uh, so in general, I, I support this budget. Um, I would ask the chief to take a look at some of the things we just talked about. Particularly, is there enough incentive to have officers become trained as EMTs? Let's ask him to take a look at that. I'm, I'm willing to pay a little more to get more officers to be EMTs. Also, I'm willing to pay a little more to get electric vehicles if necessary. Uh, than simply to get the cheapest vehicle that might happen to be a gas-fired vehicle. Uh, even though I spent time on the advisory committee and I understand the importance of saving every dime. I think there's some overriding issues here with that. If you need additional funds for regionalization with a regional dispatch center, I would support that. And encourage that, just as we discussed. So I support the budget, but would like to see you take a look at some of these things that have been discussed. To see if, if it really does everything that we talked about.
Totally.
Hmm. Okay, thank you very much, okay, um. Any other last comments?
Yeah, this is just, like I said, budgets in general. Um, Deb, I think Deb's on here, right? Deb Seifring?
Yes, I, yes, I am.
Um, when are we going to, are we separating everything out with the IT? I know I mentioned it with the FIRE, are you working on that with them? I know Zach mentioned a meeting coming up, is that something that's a separate budget this year?
Uh, it is gonna be a separate budget, we met last week, uh, with Sean, Zach. Um. Uh, the chief, myself and Diane, trying to decide how to go about doing it. And I know that you asked in the FIRE if they were gonna keep that money in there. And our determining factor at this point is who's responsible for the budget. So FIRE knows more about the IT things that are related to FIRE, so they should be responsible for that. So the things going to the ID, IT department would be overall kind of things that benefit the whole community. And that's kind of what we're trying to decide now, what should be in that budget, what shouldn't be in that budget and kind of going from there, but yeah, we're working on it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, any further ado, I'll, um, thank, thank the chief and, uh, move on to next agenda item. Excuse me one minute, I was gonna bring up my, uh, I believe it's the ARPA funds. Right, it's up here.
It's actually the Zach, the consideration.
Oh, it is.
Gift to the Sherburne Fire Department.
I had to bring it up on my computer screen, exactly, so, agenda number five, consideration of acceptance of gift to the Sherburne Fire Department, Zach Ward, Fire Chief, thank you, Dan.
Sorry to bother you again, I know you have a long agenda. Um, I'll just give you a, a real brief description of this, on December nineteenth, we responded mutually over to Dover. To assist them in rescuing a horse, uh, that was, that was stuck in a, in a barn. Uh, we were called because we actually have some specialized equipment for responses like this and. We have a, a lot of staff that have gone through extensive training for these types of things and that's why they requested us. Um, to come over, unfortunately, the horse didn't make it, uh, but we were able to assist, um. The owner, uh, with, with removing the horse from the barn, they were extremely grateful. For our work to do that, it was a Sunday morning, we were over there, I think, for over an hour or two. Um, so they provided us with this, uh, very generous donation of, uh, one thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, um, for our efforts.
Okay, very good. Very good, that's kind of a little bit of a unique Sherburne thing, the horse saving, but.
It seriously is, you. I tell, you know, I'm, in this, this chief's meeting I was in, I, I tell them that we do that and they couldn't believe it, you know? So, which I think is, is hilarious, but we, we like doing it, so. Well, I'll make a motion to accept the, that's proposed by Chief Ward.
So move, look at Paul seconded it, I think, yep. Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
I'm also, hi, thank you very much, Zach.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number six, uh, ARPA funding, a continued, um, discussion with advisory and capital budget, uh, committee members. I guess, uh, Stephen Tsai, are you, uh, representing, excuse me? Are you representing, uh, advisory here? If they might have walked away.
But he's here, he's muted.
Here he is.
Now, Steve.
Steve, go ahead.
I think someone else was talking. Sometimes I know when, when we go on for a long time, people kind of walk away from the computers and wouldn't surprise me if that happened.
I see him and I heard him for a second, so.
He's, I'm texting, he's coming.
Okay.
All right, can you hear me?
Trying to get on his computer.
No, I said, yes, of course.
We hear him now, we can hear him.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
You wanna share your screen, um, Stephen?
Uh, well, I didn't have anything that I was presenting.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, I'm sure, then is it more than Diane, is this more about, um, the, the agenda item? I requested a sub-agenda item underneath it, is that why this is on here?
Yes, it is, at the last meeting, um. Select Board had decided they wanted to have advisory and capital budget come to discuss. How to move forward with the ARPA funds in the best way we can, um, spend the funding that we have. So you requested that I invite advisory and a member from capital budget and that's why they had an IT. It's more of a roundtable discussion on how to move forward and then you asked me to put on, um. Regarding subcontracted services.
Yes, that I did, that almost meant that to be almost a separate item, so I wanted to cover a few things, frankly, I might cover the next two items we're talking about. But I want to make sure, we talked about it before, it's okay with the board that, um. I engage on Capital Sujic Solutions. Um, they have two employees there that I've worked with before very successfully. And one of them is becoming a specialty and actually advising communities on, uh, ARPA funds and can kind of pull this together a little bit more as a program. Um, and kind of provide a kind of consolidated recommendation, uh, to the board and to advisory as well. As well as some certain other administrative tasks, which we can talk about in the next two agenda items as well. Um, you know, the two people that work there, I know one of them was a former town administrator and has done quite well with a, a lot of stuff like this. I don't know if it needs a vote or not, but I'm wondering if there's any, um. Any, uh, discussion or questions or if it's okay if we move ahead with a, a contract for that?
Uh, question.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
I, I thought the, either the finance director or the treasurer already had a relationship with someone who was giving us some advice about ARPA funds.
I never heard that, it's, uh.
Um, I have a relationship with a, a consultant who's just helping with the administrative, uh, reporting task. Not about choosing what projects to do or anything else like that. But it's, it's just on an hourly basis and if we don't use them, it's, you know, no, no loss to the, to Sherburne. But it was just administrative, it was not picking and choosing, um, the projects.
Well, this ultimately, I think it'd be telling people how to pick and choose, just some strategic, also has some experience in actually accessing ARPA funds that are, um, state ARPA funds. That could be utilized for the town as well and I was also hoping to engage them, maybe to re-engage onto our, our earmark for the, uh, for the, um. There's a few different tasks that I kind of had there, uh, thoughts on. And as well as, you know, and we can talk one more in seven and eight, would frankly help us with some upcoming. Administrative, um, upcoming administrative work, those, you know, somewhat unforeseen. Oh yeah, Mary Ann, you had a question?
I just, yeah, I, I needed clarification, you've already partly clarified that, uh, as written in the agenda, it was a little misleading. Uh, apart from the various subcontract services that could be useful. I didn't hear at our last discussion at the last meeting. A kind of closure on how we're going to proceed in prioritizing potential ARPA projects in town. As various groups and committees, you know, come up with ideas. Uh, where's the central? Uh, where's the central clearinghouse and how are those decisions going to be made? I think we just need to be more clear about that.
And that's that's what I'm hoping this consultant can actually come in and kind of help us do, because you're right. Someone comes up, they thinks of something, oh, I have a need, I'm gonna ask for ARPA funds. And you know, and we all have different, every time we've talked about this, I've brought up the fact that I want to cover existing expenses, you know, I I don't want to just get a new toy because we have money to get a new toy. You know, I have, I absolutely want to cover existing expenses. I think that having someone come in, this experience, this couple together. I don't know if we form some subcommittee or something like that with, you know, a selectmen advisory and maybe um you know, finance director or something like that, but I think needs someone to come in to kind of at least initially pull something together and kind of uh you know, we've never had that. We never had someone that could really pull this together. Here's consolidated, here's certain expenses you you have right now and pull together what the needs are. And then have, you know, us as elected officials, decision makers, actually drive what gets done. So that that's been my thought on it.
Oh, well, I sort of prefer the idea of some kind of subcommittee or working group in town to uh to help uh identify our projects and flesh them out. And uh maybe provide a a blueprint prioritization or figure out a process for prioritization. I can see how the process could be assisted by someone from outside, but to actually uh, you know, get projects identified that are worth considering is you really have to know the town very well. And I think we have enough people in town, enough ideas floating around that a a group that concentrates on this for a short period of time should be able to put something together.
If you think so. My thought is that right now, you're right, we have many different people with different interests, but nothing is coming together. Do you know what I mean? And I think we need someone to kind of help pull that together and um.
But that would is still, if you have someone from outside, it's still going to involve input from uh key people in town, people who know, you know, the areas, the departments, et cetera. You're still gonna need a group in town that can, that's gonna have to put in some time. And how you structure that, I I don't know, but I think uh you can't just turn it over to someone from outside, as you know, there's got, there's gotta be both things happening.
Of course not. Decision making will always come from, you know, the professionals um in-house or the elected um the elected volunteers, the ultimate decision. But right now, nothing is coming together. That's my, I guess, my frustration of this. Everyone comes up, every time someone wants to do something or that comes before me, I get a little bit frustrated with it, you know what I mean? There's no consolidated plan, and I'm not saying things aren't worth it. But you know, I think we all have different conflicting interests, and you know, I personally would like someone to delve into what existing expenses can be covered by ARPA funds to lower the tax rate, not to buy a new toy. That's my personal interest. And I think George might be on the same page with me and and other people want something different. And uh right now, we'd have nothing. So I'm just trying to have a catalyst to start with something, and that's just um. I guess that that's my frustration with with the whole thing there. We we can, if we want, we can form a committee here today and do whatever, but I just don't think you know, and that's maybe a good for decision making, but those committees are rarely working committees or doer committees, you know, you still always need someone to pull it together. And as we'll talk about in the next two agenda items, we don't really have that. And um anyways, that that that's my thought. I think we need someone. And being honest with you, that's only one of the things I'm I'm, you know, hoping to um to contract out, and that's why I was actually hoping this item was a standalone item, and I apologize. Well, anyways, um I think you see what I'm saying, Mary Ann.
Yeah, I do, I do. Whether it's a committee or an in-town person or an out-of-town person, uh, there still is no defined central place that people can bring uh ideas for for ARPA projects uh too, you know, and it may be things that'll lower the tax rate. It may be things that indirectly lower the tax rate. We all want to lower the tax rate. But uh I I think uh people now have ideas and they don't know where to go with them.
Yeah, that's exactly it. It helps someone pull it together. Like, if it's okay, I'm gonna call on uh um Steve Si.
Right. Um, yeah, I mean, I think uh what what I, at least what I thought we were gonna do here is I think exactly what Marion um is describing was come up with the the strategy. What's the plan going to be um for how to organize the use of the ARPA money? Uh, because like you said, Eric, it's just kind of like it's it's been a little bit willy-nilly and first come, first served. Um, and you know, I've had private conversations with uh multiple people involved in town government who have expressed their frustration about the same thing, essentially that um nobody's in charge and um there's no overarching plan. And then furthermore, we, when you look at other towns, you know, they do have plans and they, you know, have publicly listed, okay, well, we have X amount of uh ARPA funds and we have plans for A, B, C, and D projects, which are going to cost, you know, this amount, and that's how we're gonna use our ARPA funds. And I guess other towns, they've had, you know, longer lists, and they've actually sent out surveys to the residents to say, okay, well, um how would you like us to use, you know, the ARPA funds? And so somebody has come up with already a list of different ways to use the the funds. And you know, I think in an ideal world, you know, I think if we're speaking frankly, you know, it's the it's the job that a town administrator or, you know, in a city, a mayor um would would have been doing. Um, and you know, uh lacking that, the the question then becomes, all right, well, whose responsibility is it? You know, I think ultimately, as the executive body of the town, it's the select board's responsibility to maybe not actually do the planning, but certainly to determine how the plan is going to get done and to appoint or delegate that responsibility. Uh, so I feel like that's what that's what tonight's discussion is about, right? And um, you know, I think that what you suggested, contracting it out, that's certainly uh an option. Um, and I think that also what uh Marion is saying, that having, you know, sort of uh some sort of an ad hoc working group composed of various people in town, um, I I think that's gonna have to be important as well, right? Because unless in uh the following items, you appoint somebody who already has a very strong working knowledge of the town. It's again, that knowledge needs to come from um from the town, right? Um, I I know that early in this ARPA funding process, I uh, you know, sort of uh indirectly attempted to start this organization process. I think I had Deb Seifring send out a uh a memo to the various uh department heads and uh budget makers as a sort of uh informal uh call for proposals for, you know, things that they think they might want to use ARPA funding for. It doesn't have to be a fully fleshed out plan, but just kind of a, you know, pie in the sky sort of um ideas. And I didn't know if that was going to result in a huge flood of um projects or a little trickle, and it turned out to be just a small trickle. So obviously, that plan of kind of like passively waiting for all of these uh ideas to come flooding into us, uh, that's not gonna work. So we need either a person or a group that's going to actively go around and poll all the people, right? I mean, I think we need to go approach the DBW and the fire department and the police department and the council on aging and the library and uh, you know, the board of health and, you know, all, basically, all of all of these groups in town. Um, open space recreation, you know, that uh to to actively engage with them to try to figure out, okay, well, what are some things that you could come up with that you might want to use our funds for? Um, so so I think it is up to you guys, the select board, to determine, or what's the best way to get that ball rolling.
So what do you think would be a good catalyst for, you know, forming um some kind of subcommittee or working group? Yeah, I'll tell you one thing, it's like, you know, you've mentioned that people about polling and stuff like that, and we all have different thoughts and we're all reasonable people. Um, I don't want to approach different departments and say, what toys do you want to buy with this newfound money? I want to have someone go through and analyze existing expenses and see what we can offset. That's just my opinion. It might differ from your opinion, might differ from Jeff's opinion and other opinions like that, but I think maybe why it's important to have something like this. You know, I I and that again, that's just my opinion. So that just goes to like the whole thing where maybe we need something to come before with a select board or a working group to kind of advise, like, how do we approach this? Do we actually poll departments? Do we poll, you know, people who want new toys? And I'm saying that toys, I'm not looking to marginalize it or to, you know, say anything like that, but that's kind of how it feels, you know what I mean? I'm kind of looking for um a real thousand-foot level of how to look at these and maybe have differing opinions on some kind of working group to work with someone that can actually tell us what the options are, if that makes any sense. Pie, I have like six hands up here, though, so I want to be able to respect that the order that people um have have raised the hands. Um, did you have anything else, Steve, or or do you have any thoughts on what I said?
Uh, I I'm sure I have thoughts about it, but they're not fully formed, so I would say move on to whoever's next in line here.
Okay, um, Dan Sitchell, please.
Hi, uh, I I'm Dan Sickle also on advisory, and I just wanted to follow up on a comment that Marion and Steve made. In terms of the possibility of putting together some sort of ad hoc town committee. And full disclosure, I I know about these activities through my husband, Sam Nelson, who's been involved in library landscape committee work and other things. But my understanding is that that work has expanded some broader scope and thinking about broader themes in the master plan, and I think the group that's kind of been doing that is a bit of a reconstituted TAC or Town Improvement Advisory Committee. And so I think there's a group that's been having some conversations about this. As as uh as as was said, you know, they're gonna have a particular perspective and a particular view. But if one is thinking about a structure of an ad hoc committee that the select board might want to engage to do some thinking, there is a group of people in town who've been already doing some thinking about just those kinds of things.
Okay. Um, I'll go, I'm just gonna, just so people know where they stand, I go Jeff and then Paul and then Mary Ann. Uh, Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, I think I have a little bit different perspective. First of all, I agree with everything you said, Eric, about not wanting this to be like, hey, we need some new toys. So I would say two things. One, I strongly support hiring this outside firm, and I'm separating the task into two parts. I see them as giving us a benchmarking way to have a process for managing ARPA funds. They're not gonna look at individual projects, I wouldn't say. They can give us guidelines for picking projects, they can give a a process for managing them and maybe, you know, guidelines on how to submit them for consideration. But I think the outside group I view as a benchmarking group that will give us a very good process for managing our ARPA funds. Both both the um requests of them and management thereafter. And and once that's done, I don't think we need any more groups. We have a capital budget committee and an advisory committee, and they approve all our expenditures operating in capital budgets in town. And this is just a different funding source. Some of our capital projects are funded with free cash, some of them are bonded, and some of them will be funded by ARPA funds. So I would just say that when a department comes to the regular, you know, advisory hearing and select board hearing with their requested capital projects, we can decide how to fund it, whether it's ARPA funds, and it would go through the same thing, like capital budget. I was on capital budget for two or three years, and they're gonna review, you know, is the project needed? Not whether, you know, it's not like ARPA funds are free, that you're taking that money away from some other project in town if you use it. So we should have the same criteria that if it's a new vehicle, you have to show maintenance history with excessive repairs or justify the project, and then you figure out how you fund it. And that would be through those different sources, free cash or bonding or ARPA. But I think we already have a very good process, and the department heads, every single capital or if it's an operating project, has to come from a department, because that's where the costs are tracked in that budget. So all the budget makers can submit their projects, and I think we can use capital budget and advisory to just decide which ones might be good candidates for ARPA. So I I long-winded story, but I think an outside firm is great to benchmark the process. But I think we already have an internal process for all capital requests, and we don't need anyone.
Okay, I said, uh, Paul, you're next. You have two hands raised, by the way, so I lost track of you.
Which is the real Paul.
I'll lower one for you.
Uh, one, I'm gonna say a couple of things. First of all, I am very much in favor of the notion of using our performance to offset costs that we would otherwise impose on the taxpayers. I think I've been saying this ever since our funds first became available. So my first point is, let's make it, let's consider the taxpayers and anything we can do to keep our tax rate low or lower than what it is, is something we we should be using our funds for. The second point I wanted to make is that a a lot of the communities that I work for ask me questions about our funds. And the the question that gets asked over and over again is the question, can we use our funds for this project? Because there's an expectation that there's gonna be an audit in let's say, three, four, or five years from now. And when they do that audit, if they say, no, this is not a legitimate ARPA use, then the we have to repay the funds, we have to find another funding source. That may be the taxpayers, so we end up in a mess. So the reason why they ask me as a lawyer, and I want to refer them to account, there are people who are out there who have immersed themselves in ARPA funding and know what are allowable projects are approvable and what are not. And then further explanation of that, this, there are categories in the ARPA list. And the category that everybody is is trying to use is the lost revenue. Because if you get, if you have lost revenue and your your accountants and your auditors or your outside person that you hire tells you, you have that lost revenue category, you can use it for any municipal purpose. That's relatively safe. But the problem is that that may represent only thirty percent of the available ARPA funds. So you really have more ARPA funds that then communities are are dealing with because they don't know how to fit within those categories and what projects actually fit within those categories. So my view is is somewhat different from Jeff's. I don't think we need somebody to tell us what the process is. I think we need somebody who who can serve as that resource, who can say to us, D, this project that you want to do, no, it's not ARPA fundable. It doesn't fit within this category. And if you move it into the lost revenue category.
First.
Then you're not gonna have a, you need a financial advisor on, because that's the questions that keep coming to me.
Oh, sorry.
So the expert that I would want to hire, the consultant that I would want to hire is are those who answer that question. So they don't decide what projects we should adopt. They would say to you, we can't put it in any of the categories, it has to go in the lost revenue category. And if everything goes into the lost revenue category, as I say, then we lose a lot of the ARPA funds. So the name of the game is to move these expenses or characterize them in a way that fits within the categories. And that's a skill that you have to pay for, that gives you important advice. So that's the kind of person I want to support hiring, if we're gonna hire anybody. As far as creating more committees and whatnot, one of the purposes behind ARPA and one of the specifications behind ARPA is the specify, it is the board to select one of the communities of towns that makes the decision. The idea behind that is they don't want a big, long process. They don't want town meeting. They don't want uh consultation with different boards and committees and disagreements and all that kind of stuff. They wanted to get this fund, these funds out into the economy to keep the economy moving. And so it's essentially the the chief elected board or the mayor with or without the city council being on the charter to make these decisions and make them fast and make them responsibly. It, so whatever process we set up, I don't want a committee that suddenly is taking over for the board of selectmen and making those decisions. Ultimately, we should stick with what the statute is calling for, which is for us to make the decisions. Certainly welcome input, certainly welcome advice, certainly welcome ideas of projects. But I don't think that we need to create more committees or or delegate our authority to existing groups or committees. This is a a select board issue. First, foremost. And we need to decide, what is our vision for the town? What do we want to have? And we need to decide, what is our vision for the town? What do we want to have happen with the town? And let's get those money. Let's get this, these funds out into the economy.
Well, so you did touch on something that I didn't, you, you worded it better than I was trying to word it. That's one of the reasons that, you know, um, I was looking at this specific consultant because they've worked with several other communities with ARPA funds. Not only to determine what's eligible, but they might have seen other things elsewhere. They might've had good ideas, said, oh, you know, Everett used it to do this or what have you. And, um, um, I think seeing that, you know, like right now, people are texting me and putting in a chat like things are illegal, not legal to do it and whatever else. I think we need someone else to come and advise us. I really do. What can be done? What options are out there? What other communities have done? And that's why you hire a consultant, because they work with, you know, 20 communities and not just, you know, Sherman's Little Silo. And, um, I think you've definitely enforced, um, you definitely enforce what I've been trying to do it. And then it's, it's a product of one, you know, I wanted some experience to advise us. And two, you know, what I said before, my own frustration of me, you know, keep talking about it and, you know, not getting traction. This is at least some kind of catalyst. Okay. So the order, just so people know, uh, it's going to go Marion, Steve and then Deb. So Marion, go ahead.
All right. You've talked me out of setting up a new committee. I, I, I totally get it. So now I agree with Paul. And, uh, and with Jeff, uh, but I still, I'm not sure I totally agree with Eric. So I'm working on you, Eric. On the one hand, I can see offsetting, uh, items that are already in the budget. We've just seen budgets. We know what they look like. I guess you could go down the list and say, oh, could maybe we could use this ARPA funds for this line item or that line item. I think that's a good way to fritter the ARPA funds away and not see any real positive benefit for the town. So I also would like to be open to, uh, ideas that come in from other boards and committees to the select board if we're willing to, I'm willing to do it. If you guys are willing to do it too, uh, to have maybe to the town administrator to, uh, our interim administrator or, uh, or to Diane for the moment, because she's operating as administrator. Uh, it's sort of a central place. So people know where to submit ideas. And then from time to time, we can look at them and decide, okay, this would save money on this or that budget. Uh, or this would be a really good fix for a problem we have in town. And by a fix for a problem we have in town, I, I, I don't mean just offsetting stuff that we have money to do anyway. But rather something that we wouldn't be able to do otherwise.
Well said. Um, Steve, you're next.
Um, yeah, I have a, a, a few comments. And first off, to respond to some of what Paul was saying, and I suspect actually that Deb is going to say a lot of these things and maybe has, uh, actually more knowledge about it. But I believe that the consultant that Deb uses does a lot of those things that, that actually Paul and Eric, you were both talking about, which is kind of vetting the different projects to determine which categories they would fit into, whether they are eligible or not. Um, you know, determining the revenue replacement. Um, I believe that that already is what Deb's consultant does, because I know every time thus far that an ARPA request has come through, she has run it by that consultant to make sure that this qualifies and it's okay. Because that's usually one of the first questions that we ask her is, oh, are we sure that this project qualifies? Um, furthermore, regarding the revenue replacement, I believe that the consultant and Deb went through that exercise and determined that actually the revenue, the revenue lost calculation eclipses the total amount of our, um, ARPA funds. So technically we can use the money for anything that we want. Um, so, so it isn't just, as your example, Paul, it's not just 30% of the ARPA money. It's greater than 100% of the ARPA money. So we generally have no longer been concerned about the categories of, um, spending because, uh, everything will qualify at this point. Um, I do have a question though, um, and Deb, you may know the answer to this and, and maybe not, but, um, I don't know that with the revenue replacement calculation, does that mean that, does that supersede the restriction on, um, you know, as Daryl put in the chat? There's a restriction on not being able to, to use the funds allocated, I say funds allocated to states cannot be used directly or indirectly to offset tax reductions or delay a tax or tax increase. You know, which is directly what, what, what Eric is, is wanting to do. But I didn't know if the, uh, the lost revenue calculation basically, uh, makes that, that, uh, restriction null and void. Do you know the answer to that?
No, I, I, my understanding is that the, the, the lost revenue calculation can be used for anything, which includes paying for capital expenses, which then reduces your tax base. So you can use it that way. You can't pay, you, there's like four stipulations. You can't pay off debt. You can't put money in stabilization. You can't pay for any legal things. There's like four stipulations that you can't use the ARPA money for. But there are a lot of things you can use it for that eventually reduce your tax rate. So it's, it's kind of a, uh, you know, six, one half a dozen at the other. And the fact that it, it does reduce your tax rate if you don't get a long-term debt, if you pay for the Pine Hill access road, you know, using ARPA funds, which we can do. We, you know, that kind of thing, but.
Right.
And our long, uh, you know, to, to agree with what you've said is our long-term revenue or net loss revenue is exceeds the money that we received. And then in addition to that, they came out this week that said, there's a final, um, a final analysis on it and every community can spend up to $10 million in, uh, lost revenue, which far exceeds the money that we received. So there's no problem spending the money on whatever we do. And then that also reduces our reporting requirements down, down the road. Like initially, I don't know if you remember, you know, some of the things that we had to do, let's see for the council and agent assessment. We had to justify that it was helping a certain group of people in town and that it was going to help this, this, and this. That's all null and void now, because that money can be used for any of those projects. So the consultant we have has told us all this, that the administrative piece is in place. What the piece is that we're missing is putting somebody in charge. Because whether it, at every, every time we talk about it, somebody says we need to prioritize. We need to know what's ahead. What are our other plans? What are we going to do this with? We go through the same steps every single time and there's not somebody in charge. I don't care if it's a group of one person, two, three, four, but somebody needs to be in charge. And it can't be somebody throwing in suggestions and then we're going to throw in suggestions and then we're going to talk about it. And then we're going to say, that's not the best use. And then we're going to wait for more suggestions, more. There needs to be somebody in charge who leads the process.
Thank you for wrapping up my frustration in two sentences.
Yeah. And, and you know, and if, if it's an outside consultant who tells us the best way to move forward, that's, that's what we need to do is, you know, maybe they say form a committee with three people. And those three people are going to prioritize, in their opinion, the things, then open it up to discussion, but there needs to be somebody to even lead the discussion.
Well, Deb, let me ask the consultant that you're using, are they doing that? Are they working with other communities? If they can come in and kind of help out like this?
Uh, they're an, actually an accounting firm. They're not really, uh, prioritizing the projects, you know, they are, uh, basically helping with administrative task. I, I've never, they, there's a possibility that they do that, do do that, that's, we never really went down that path with them. But, uh, they are helping a lot of communities with the funding. I actually just listened to a webinar, you know, that they had thousands of people on, on, it's a big accounting firm, so.
Okay. Maybe, maybe we'll chat a little bit offline, just to kind of get an idea of what they do and the firm that I found and what they do. And we can actually just, you know, see, um, see what we pursue. So Steve, your hand is still up. Okay. Your hand is down. Deb, did you have something that you were answering Steve's question?
Yeah, I was basically going to, you know, say the same thing that, uh, Steve said is we, we can't, you know, to answer Paul's questions, we can use the, we've clarified that we can use the money for just about anything. And, um, but you know, I, I think we're on the same page. We just need somebody in charge.
I couldn't agree more. Now, I pause, see your hand raised, but George is ahead of you. And do you have something like really quick relative to what?
Yeah, I, 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 I defer to George.
Okay, George, go ahead.
I just want to go back to what Jeff said. I think that was important, that we don't need to form a new committee. We have advisory. And I've said this from the beginning, that I think, I know, Paul, we are the legislative body that gets to decide this, but I really would like advice from advisory before we vote on these things. I think advise, that's why we have advisory. I think that's an easy process that if we have it submitted to our town administrator. And then they present anything that's submitted to advisory. And then we have the ultimate approval after we get advice from advisory. And I think Jeff kind of laid that out. I, I agree with him on that. I think we don't need a new committee. We have, that's what we have advisory for. And I think if they can, if they're willing to take on that task, which it sounds like from Steve, they are, um, that, that makes the most sense to me.
Okay. Yeah, Paul, go ahead.
So I wanted to directly address the issue of, of who's in charge. To me, that's the question of leadership, who is leading? And I think that has to be the board of selectmen, because that's what we're elected to do. It is really fundamentally our job to have a vision for the town and decide how to implement that vision. And the use of our performances is a funding source that helps us implement that vision of the town. And whether it's, it's part of our goals and objectives that, that Jeff has been working on. Or whether it's part of the master plan that has been developed and approved. Or wherever we get our vision for the community. It is up to us, just like it's up to the governor of the Commonwealth to present a budget as to where he thinks money should be spent. Maybe he wants to spend more money on the, uh, the registry of motor vehicles and, and maybe, uh, uh, less money on prisons. Or maybe same thing with the president of the United States. The president may decide he wants to spend money, uh, building a border wall. Or maybe they want to spend money on, on COVID relief funds. That's up to the president to lead. It's up to the governor to lead. It's up to the mayors to lead. And it is up to us to have the vision of where we want to go. And it's not just reacting to proposals that people might think of. Where people are sitting back saying, gee, if I, if I could spend money on us 20 years and maybe I'll take advantage of this. No, we need to figure out where we want to go as a community. And use ARPA as a resource to carry out that vision. So fundamentally, it is up to us, not only by statute, but by the vote of the people. That's why you have an elected board making those policy decisions at the end of the day. So also agree that there's certainly a role for advisor, certainly a role for anybody who has ideas and anybody who has advice. We should always be willing to listen to that. But at the end of the day, or I can give you a list of things that I think are, are important to be done with, with the community going forward that I've been fighting for, for years. I'm sure each one of us can do that. And I don't see adding more committees, more people to the process as, as responsible people. Really helps things. So if the question is, will your proposals get submitted? They should get submitted to the town administrator for the board of select. If the question is which, which of these things should be pursued as being the top priorities? Establishment of priorities for the community is the role of the elected officials. That's exactly why you have the market. So it's already there, the laws clear. It's just the question of, of living up to our responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank, so just food for thought, something I was thinking about just recently, the closest thing I can think of, where basically you've got a set amount of money from the state. Um, and the amount, and the amount of money essentially like, you know, by right and it's, you know, and it's a set amount. It's not like a grant you apply for is chapter 90. And chapter 90, correct me if I'm wrong, that's pretty much when, um, so I'm in this question of the select board, is that correct? Do we get advice from other boards when we expend chapter 90 funds?
Yes, it's the board of selectmen, but we certainly rely on our DPW director that goes to the pavement, see what the condition of the roads are, give us reports. Oh, what I'm saying, exercising leadership, I don't mean ignoring everybody else. I'm saying involve everybody else. But it should be clear to everybody in the town before we even had this discussion, that literally, no, kind of tended, the buck stops with the select board.
Okay, um, uh, Steve, go ahead.
Um, yeah, so I just, I guess I want to, uh, respond to some of the comments about, uh, you know, who's in charge and what the advisory committee's role is. Um, I think that, yes, the advisory committee is, um, happy to be the sort of like, uh, vetting committee that over, you know, uh, screens these, uh, projects before they come before the select board. Uh, but I think that, uh, every, every time these come before us, multiple advisory members usually express the same frustration that, that, that everybody else has been saying, which is that we don't, we don't know what the overall plan is. We don't know where a particular project fits into an overall plan because, because there is no overall plan. Um, I think that what advisory does not want to do is be the architect and the strategist for how to use the entire 1.2 million dollars, right? You know, like, I think if we had an idea of what the strategy was supposed to be, then we would have a better idea of, okay, well, when somebody comes before us with a $50,000 request, with a $200,000 request, we have an idea of, okay, well, does this fit into that overall strategy that ideally somebody else has already come up with? And so I think that's what, that's what's, that's what we're lacking right now is, you know, we need to have an idea of the context in which these requests are coming in. Now, I think that if, uh, if the select board decides that the best way to utilize the funds is essentially that we should identify capital items that would normally be going through the town meeting process anyways. And then we're just, uh, instead going to choose to use our funds for them. That's a totally reasonable strategy. And, and once we know that that's the strategy, I think that, um, it makes our job a lot easier to, uh, to, to, to look through these and, and approve them. You know, we have through the end of calendar year 2024 to use the funds. So that's three more entire town meetings worth of capital items that are going to come before the town. There's going to be way more than 1.2 million dollars worth of capital items in three town meetings, right? So it's not going to be a problem to use them up that way. And I, that, you know, I, I, I think that that gets to Eric, your, uh, point of, I don't want to just be buying a bunch of new toys, right? So, um, you know, I, I've said this to multiple people also is that, if they're bringing us an ARPA request for something that normally they would be bringing to town meeting anyways, my preference is that they simply go through that full, uh, vetting process with capital budget, with advisory, with select board and then a town meeting vote. And simply once town meeting has approved the item, then subsequently we can decide um, that we're going to use ARPA funds to pay for it as opposed to, um, uh, you know, borrowing or free cash, right? And it would be very easy to use up all 1.2 million dollars in that way over the next three years. If that's the strategy that you guys as the executive body decide is the best strategy for the town. Um, but I think we just need you to make that decision, you know, and, and if instead it's going to be, no, 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 we do need a big overarching strategy with projects and everything, then, then you need to decide that and decide how, how you're going to execute that plan, right? Um, because I do, I fully agree with you, Paul, like you guys, the buck stops with you, right? But you're, you know, you're a volunteer board that meets, um, you know, a couple of times a month, you know, as opposed to being able to delegate or assign, um, a person, whether it's an employee or, you know, a small subcommittee that can meet outside of your public meetings to be working on this, right? So, so that's, that's the challenge, right, of you guys being the executive body is that you're not a 40-hour a week, um, body, you know? So, so it's, uh, wha- whatever strategy you guys feel is the most efficient, but, but yes, some, someone's got to be in charge. Someone else has got to be the architect and have the overall plan. And then advisory is happy to, um, to work within that framework.
Yeah, well said. I'd say a great thank. Yeah, well said. I say a great thank you. Thank you, Steve. Marian.
Yeah, I agree with both Paul and Steve. I think the buck should stop with the select board and the advisory board doesn't have. An overall plan for the town and as this talk of overall plans goes on. I kind of remember that I spent like four years of my life talking to everybody in town, including every board and committee. And many individuals to put together the master plan for the planning board. And of course, the planning board helps with with that too, but. Other than looking at capital proposals that might fit our funds. I think there 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 might be. Another sort of bar that should be, that that should be. In place and that is, is this consistent with the master plan? And that would help us to differentiate between capital items that. We would have to spend money on anyway that make no long term difference and capital items that might might really make a long term. Impact on the town and be consistent with the goals and. You know, the big picture overarching goals and the specific recommendations in the master plan. I guess this is a plug for the master plan. I just don't want all that work to be lost.
I think that's a definite consideration as I'm, you know, starting to pull together certain options for this, no question about that. Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I actually, I Marion, the point you brought up, I that was something that I meant to say also, and I forgot, but. You know, one of the comments actually that an advisory member made, I believe it was Natalie Weir, when. You know, one of the meetings that we were talking about this and the lack of a plan, she was like, we we have this huge document that. People spent years and many, many hours on the master plan and. It presumably has ideas for a vision for the town and there are probably elements of that. That master plan that are not yet realized and using ARPA funds to help. Forward that master plan seems like a really ideal use and I. You know, also made the point that one of the chief architects of that master plan is now on the select board. And so do you think that you would be. Uh, an ideal person to be sort of over overseeing the projects and determining, you know, whether or not they. They they fit with the vision of the master plan. So so I fully agree that I think that. Yes, if our if our if our decision is that we're going to be using it for various capital projects over the next three years. And now we need to figure out a way to more strategically divvy up that 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 money. Then I think trying to find an intersection between planned capital and then also the master plan. Probably would be a good way to go about it.
Makes sense to me.
Okay, as I kind of wrap up this agenda item here to make sure we have at least good. You know, kind of task moving forward. It sounds like maybe I'll touch base with Deb and see what their consultant does. What their abilities are and, you know, along some of this kind of like experience other communities and stuff like that. Will also then work with Diane to at least do an initial contract to at least get something. To at least get some ideas as to, I don't know how else to word this, but basically get some ideas as to how we can strategize. What the town have them do like an initial assessment of, you know, our town expenditures, what's upcoming and start to create some kind of. I don't know, create some kind of plan or ideas or strategy with this. I don't know if I'm wording that that well. It's kind of late right now. What also some kind of what people have thoughts on, yeah, Paul, kind of like, what are we walking away from here? What are we walking away? What? We're going to walk away and have another meeting to a to a to select board meetings from now and just be angry that nothing's been done?
So I I I just want to bring up a technical point that this actually like two different Harper funds. There's Harper funds that come directly from the United States to Sherburne. And then there's Harper funds that went to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And the general court went through this big process in which they. Decided what they were going to do with the ARPA funds and as part of doing that process, they added money from the stabilization account, I think. 1.5 billion. And they put together the state Harper piece, which also comes to Sherber. So there are some technical issues about. What Deb said, that maybe, maybe. Considering both sources of funds and by state funds, I mean the combination of the of the stabilization funds and the states Harper funds. They were they were covered and we don't need any technical support, but maybe. Maybe that hasn't been fully fleshed out yet. So that's a conversation I think that that still needs some clarification in my in my mind. And number two, the the issue with the master plan. Is that I'm not sure that it covers everything. Like, for example, I for years I've been fighting for more sidewalks in town. And one of the projects that I spent, yeah, was a set of plans to do a sidewalk on Maple Street from. Town Hall to the Pheasant Fields. And it's essentially ready to go anytime we decide we want to go forward with it. Is such a is 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 that kind of infrastructure improvement, something with the master plan? Addressed at all?
Yes, indeed. Oh, yeah, there's a whole section on that, Paul. On making the town walkable, adding sidewalks.
Wonderful.
Yeah, there's a whole section on it.
So I wouldn't limit the use of our funds just to replace the equipment. Let me rephrase that. We just heard the police department saying they want a cruiser and it's going to cost $57,000. If you used our funds to buy a cruiser. So we've avoided that expense and we have something that's five years and then it's gone. If we use the money to build a sidewalk, the sidewalk will last. For a lifetime and will be a permanent asset of the community. And so it falls into, I think, a little different category. So yes, I want to use the money to assess capital expenditures, but I also want to use it. On permanent improvements to the town. So sidewalks i- i- is one of those issues. There are, there are other things that we could talk about like a like a. Senior center, there are other athletic field improvements that we saw, we heard the recreation department talk about the need for improvements. And we got lost in the issue of of artificial turf and PFAS, but so nothing has been done. Really to make recreation better in the community. So maybe. There are all these other priorities. I don't know if they're in the master plan or not. I don't have Marion's. Wonderful knowledge. I'm so delighted you're here available to us to provide all that.
You you've got a copy, Paul. Yeah, anyway, no, I I think that's exactly the point I was trying to make, Paul. A lot of these things are in the master plan and. That's the sort of thing, that's what I'm saying when I say I I hope the ARP funds. Won't just be frittered frittered away on reducing our our expenses this year. Because we we could have a bigger impact.
Eric, can I make, can I, oh, sorry to interrupt, Marion. I was just wondering if I could make a suggestion just because this is getting long. That we set a strategy meeting at our next. We have an ARPA strategy meeting at our next select board meeting and I think that is what Stephen is saying that we set a strategy. We send things to advisory to get advice that they're meeting our strategy and then we approve them. At the end of the day, I I think, but I think we've talked a lot about this tonight and we need to move on. If we could just set a strategy meeting for our next meeting.
I I wish before we, I I agree with you, George, we need to do that and I don't want to prolong this, but I think. It would be good right away so that it doesn't get kicked down down the road even two weeks to maybe designate. The assistant town administrator as a a person to whom people could suggest ideas if they come outside. Uh, of committees and boards or even from committees and boards. Or you'd be willing to just accept those Diane in writing, you could just make a pile of emails or papers to pass to us.
Absolutely.
I think and even to go on a little more on that, Marion, I've had a suggestion from people. That we request proposals, we get ideas from the citizens as to what they want, not just. Not just, you know, people that have things that want to, you know, that that we say, what what is the general public want? To spend money on and then we can see if it fits into our strategy on our master plan.
Yeah. I need, we need to cast a broad net and let people know that there's a place to go with their ideas.
I I would just disagree with one point, Marion. We we've got a lot going on as our next budget, our next agenda items. I think the town administrator is going to be way overloaded with things. I don't think that's the right place. I don't agree with that being the place where this should reside. There's too many things that we're trying to leverage there right now and and bootstrap. So I would recommend we find another resource.
I think you're right, Jeff. The question is, I don't want to put off just finding a place or a person, a contact. Even if it's temporary.
I I I would suggest capital budget committee. That's what they do. And almost all the ARPA projects that I know, particularly the ones Paul describes that are more permanent. Are going to be capital projects, not operating ones and capital budget doesn't have that many things to review. So I think. That would be my suggestion.
Can I just note that?
Yeah, good. And then, you know, I'm going to wrap this up and just so everyone knows, I'm still going to engage a couple of consultants on this just because. The more I hear the conflicting things, the more I realize we need one pretty badly. Go ahead, Steve.
I mean, I think already in place, like people can submit their project requests to, I I mean, I believe it was a combination of. The finance director and the town administrator. So I know that all the projects that we've had brought before us have been. Brought to us by Deb. And so I think there is already somebody who is accepting the 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 proposals and I think. Um, I had Deb send out the memo to everybody to say, hey, give us your ideas. So so I think that's already in place in terms of. Where are people sending their ideas? You can correct me if I'm wrong, Deb.
No, no, you're you're absolutely right. I mean, when people had questions, even if they asked Diane, she referred them up to me, I put them together. And, you know, I think it's a great idea to ask the community, but somebody's got to ask the community. Who is that person that's going to go? Ask the community. And every time, you know, I I've gone to advisory, I've gone to select board and every time. Everybody's asking the same question is, what is the big picture? And I I agree, this like board is the is the last place, but somebody needs to do the legwork before it gets to the select board. Because you folks don't have the time. I mean, your agendas are full for the next up through budget season. You're not going to want to spend, what do we spend tonight? 45 minutes just, you know, saying the same thing over and over again. I think somebody just. I I think I may be on Eric's team here, just let let's hire somebody. To to point us in the right direction, to make a plan, to tell us who is best suitable. To make this architecture of where we're going to spend the money. Because right now, we've we've heard five different people say, five, you know, different people are in charge. Maybe somebody who has worked in other communities have has found that. The finance director is the best person to do it, or the town administrator is the best person to do it, or the capital projects person is the best place to do it, or the select board. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. Let's hire, you know, let's let's get somebody to tell us what the best way is to do it.
And I mean, I'll give you that, that that's what I'm I'm hearing at this point. This is why I'd like to wrap up this thing. I will be, I'll touch base with you, Deb. We'll call a couple of consultants, kind of go back to where at the beginning here. If anything has been, if anything has convinced me throughout this entire discussion is we need. I think we need them now more more than ever, to be honest with you. Yeah, there's no question about that. I don't think this is, and as far as Marion's thing, I'll see how we look. How how if we talk to a couple of consultants, their ideas are, if we have a light meeting, I I'll try to fit this in at the next light meeting we have. That way I can, I understand just concern where like, you know, staff is kind of running around with the budget stuff here. You know, the town administrator and so on. And, you know, if we, if it looks like we have a meeting coming up where. I can fit something like this in and it'd be like the next next meeting or two in that range there. Now, if we talk to a consultant, all right, unless anyone strongly objects, I'm going to move on to agenda item number seven. All right, discussion of potential appointment of interim town administrator. So just so people know, David has parted ways with the town. And I hope everyone joins me in thanking David for nine years of service, working with this town. And, you know, wish them all the best in the future. But as of now. We actually do not have a current town administrator and like to have a discussion about pointing an interim town administrator. We need someone pretty quick, even just as something as a. You know, benign as executing payroll warrants. We also need someone to do some bigger deal stuff such as this. The budget season, pulling stuff together and even these opera funds we spoke about.
Eric, can I make a motion that we appoint Diane Morris as interim town administrator?
I'm sure.
I want to make a friendly amendment that we include in that the authority to sign warrants.
Okay. Okay, so you have, is that also a second as well, Paul?
Yes, second amendment, I I hope he.
Yes, yes, okay, very good. And.
And I think one thing actually we should actually include in that, that there should be an increase in pay. Commensurate with the increased responsibilities of becoming the interim town administrator.
Yeah, I agree with that. About the period. Um, do we discuss the amount now? How does that work out?
Why don't we do a separate motion?
Okay, well, first tire down then.
Maybe we should ask Diane, Diane, do you want this job?
Don't ask her, she might say no, so.
Oh, my goodness. For the confidence for the select board, that means a lot to me, my goodness.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Diane. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump.
No, no, I just wanted to say thank you for the board having the the confidence in me to to do this until you get a a permanent full time administrator in. I'll do my best.
Now, Deb, did you have something that's relative to the discussion before we take the vote or can I take the vote?
Oh, you go ahead and take the vote.
Okay, so all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
I am I as well. Yeah, go ahead, Deb.
Uh, yeah, well, I'm so excited that you. Gave Diane that position. She's been doing a lot of work for a lot of time, for a long time and should definitely be recognized for all her hard work. But I actually also wanted to talk about the pay. What historically has been done is when there's always been an interim. The interim gets the pay that the 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 person who was in that position before was receiving. That's how it's been with the police chief with the finance director all along the way. That's. Historically what has been done.
Okay, discussion amongst the board? Okay.
But George was going to make a motion, I I I thought, so I'd like to hear what.
Well, I guess based on what Deb said, I mean, I I don't know. I guess we we should follow what we've been doing with with. Past practices. I mean, unless somebody else on the select board feels like.
I'm fine with this. I will say though, and this goes into basic agenda item number eight, is that I probably will lower. The salary for the next town administrator. I felt that this salary was a bit high. We'll probably hire a consultant professional to advise us as to what the actual going. I saw like Waylands is pretty high right now and so is. What's the other town? Westwood, but some other towns, like I think Dover is lower than us. And just, you know, informally, I've looked around, you know, a few things like that. So I'm fine with this during the period, but I just want to. State that I I don't want, don't think the next town administrator should be. As high as David's was unless unless his study indicates differently. Any other thoughts?
I mean, we we don't have to go that high. I mean, we don't have to, we we we've talked about. You know. it's hard to say, it's hard to discuss this, but, uh, having more of an average town administrator salary rather than what our town administrator was making, who'd worked here for nine years. Um, so I, I mean, I'll just throw it out there. I think it would be fair that we make her salary as long as she's interim at 125,000.
Okay. Yeah. Um, I think that sounds reasonable. What do other people think?
It sounds, sounds reasonable to me. I mean, it's a, a matter of, uh, setting it at a level that feels fair to Diane as well, and she can accept it or not.
I think that's more than, really, that's, that's more than fair. I do.
Okay. Okay. So, um, was that a motion, George?
Yes, I will move that we set the interim TA salary at 125,000 with this, with it. The, when Diane returns to the role of assistant TA, her salary going back to the assistant TA level.
Okay. Um, do I have a second?
I second.
Okay. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Okay. Very good.
Thank you, Diane.
Change your label. Thank you, Diane. We can change your name on there, because now you're really in charge, so.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Right. And thank you very much, Diane. And she will do a good job, we are sure. So
Thank you. I appreciate it. I really do. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next agenda item number eight, um, potentially establish a town administrative search committee. So now we need to find a full-time town administrator. Um, in the past, it's done with search committees, and I personally think I would like to consider, uh, continue that, uh, that model. Usually it's send, it's up for discussion, some kind of committee, which has a couple of members of select board, member of personnel committee, citizens at large, just something along those lines. So it's going to open up for discussion what people think, um, did like the form of a source committee.
Eric?
Yeah, Paul, go ahead.
So I've been through several searches for town administrators while I've been on the board. And the thing that I would recommend is that the entire select board be members of that committee plus others. And the reason why I say the entire select board is that the town administrator works with the select board, works with all of us. And so each of us may have different things that they think is important. And each of our views of what makes a good town administrator needs to be taken into consideration and needs to factor into the final result, because we want a town administrator that serves all the members of the board and not just one or two members of the board. So I would say, first start with all five members of the board. Add to that. And as an example, in the recent hiring of the police chief, we had the entire select board. And I think the result that was achieved is in part due to the fact that all five of us were part of the process and part of the deliberation that led to the choice of what we think is a really good chief. That worked well. I think it would work well with the town administrator.
Well, I agree with you. Certainly the police search committee, um, you know, you couldn't have asked for a better result. I'm actually very pleased. Um, I think, uh, Tom and Chief Calvin, I should say, is, um, is, is excellent. In some ways, I felt there was some come, some cumbersome, cumbersome nature of it. And I felt certain things that, um, could have been streamlined and could have been done quicker, where, um, were prolonged. I think it might have been due to the bulky size of the committee. I mean, ultimately, you know, just for, um, devil's advocate here, ultimately, the select board votes no matter what. Usually a search committees work, they bring three people before the entire select board, who then, you know, vets and, and so on like that. Police, uh, chief's also a little different also, because I think, you know, every single person on this board, all five of us have professional careers and are professionals. And I think we could actually vet a town administrator, you know, pretty well, more than a police chief. None of us are policemen, women, you know, we're just, um, you know, I think it's a kind of more up our alley where, um, you know, I just don't know if we need as cumbersome of a process that we had with the police chief. I will fully agree that the result couldn't have been any better. But I just felt like, you know, I think we could do it almost in half that amount of time if we didn't have, um, uh, the full board. But, uh, George, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I'm with you, Eric. I think it's asking a lot of all of us who are volunteering our time to be both selectmen, where we meet every other week, and then also on every search committee, I think, I'm hoping that we trust each other enough that we could have, you know, it's going to be public meetings anyway, so three of us could serve on it. And it allows two of us, I mean, we just talked about how we need to be doing strategy for ARPA funds. We have a lot of different projects that we don't all necessarily need to be involved in every aspect of a hiring process. Um, I, I, I think it's a little much. We have some other great people in town that we can get onto a committee of five or seven to, to search for a town administrator without having all five of us on there.
Yeah. Um, and Zeno, does have any thoughts on the board?
If Paul's hand is raised, I don't know if that's from before.
I think it's leftover. Yeah. I've been lowering it all night.
He has a hand raised at this.
I know. I've actually been lowering it.
And he's tricky, because he's logged on twice. So he raised a bunch of hands, including his, his physical hand. He has three hands. So I, I, yeah, I think, I'm not sure it requires, you know, five people full-time. Um, we could maybe, um, have some people do the initial, because what we did is, remember, when we did the police chief search, we had written questions we sent out to people, and we, you know, posted the ad and did all that stuff. We could maybe have the, uh, some subset of the select board do some of the upfront stuff, but maybe the entire select board could sit in on the interviews that they can't, you know, say, let's say we get, for arguments, like 10, 10 people submit their credentials. Maybe we have the sub-team, you know, review and ask questions of the people. But then when we get down to maybe six remaining or something, that we would have the whole select board in that latter stage, because otherwise it's inefficient, because we would then maybe have to repeat some of those interviews if the select board members that weren't in the earlier process wanted to hear it.
Yeah. And I mean, and I, I, I think I can say this now, since the, the police chief thing was finalized. Remember what happened last time, though, you know, we brought up, A, there's this great consultant, we should, you know, engage with them to help with the police chief thing. But we said, no, let's, um, let's put a RFP, let's interview each of them. And eight weeks later, we went up with the same consultant that we simply suggested at the first time. That's the type of stuff looking to avoid here. You know, I mean, that type of stuff where it was kind of painful, frankly, during the, and unnecessarily elongated during, uh, prolonged during the police chief thing.
But we could vet the candidates initially with a sub-team, but then, let's say, we get to some smaller number than the original submittals, then have all of us sit in on the interview, so they don't have to interview twice, sort of. So I'm, I'm suggesting kind of a hybrid approach, I guess I'm saying.
Yeah. I mean, I would like to have some involvement with it, whether I'm actually on the committee or not. I mean, frankly, I know people in the industry, I could look at a list of people and say, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, right off the gun, on a lot of the people, you know, it's a small world.
You're accepted. You're, you're on. You're good.
No, 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 I don't, it depends. I don't want, yeah, I'm not going to be on a committee. It takes eight weeks to pick a consultant. Let, I'm going to be very frank about that. I, I, I can't say enough things how painful that was, and I'm just not going to be on another committee that, that does that. If that's the direction it's going, I'm going to step off the committee. Uh, Mary Ann, go ahead. And then Paul, Paul, you got to raise the other, okay, Mary Ann and Paul.
Right. Uh, could you clarify for me, if you already know, or if not, we should talk about it, uh, who's going to be doing the preliminary work, you know, of, uh, putting out the, the, uh, the call for applicants for reviewing the job description? We have a job description for TA, we might want to review and revise that. We probably will. Uh, so I think that work needs to be done. It could be simultaneous while we're putting out, uh, the, the, uh, the job, the call for applications, but I think that has to be done to simultaneously or before.
But what will probably happen, there has to be some process, you know, I don't want to make it look like I'm looking to blow off all processes by talking about streamlining. But, you know, the select board will start with some kind of committee. We'll, we'll recommend something like two or three select board members, a member of personnel, something like that. And then we'll, um, tape applications by, as soon as maybe the next meeting, um, just simply, um, you know, make recommendations of who forms the committee. Then that committee will meet. And what I think should happen is right off the gun, hire a consultant. And after gun, someone who hires has done town administrators before, um, there's a couple, I don't say here, who I like and don't like. And, you know, I know, again, I know that world a little bit. And then they'll start right off with like, you know, job description, um, advertisement, you know, where to advertise, you know, they know the world who's looking, who's not, and, and so on like that. Um, that's probably, that's probably how it'll happen, honestly, at that point there. It'll be, it'll be up to the committee, who will do a lot of the legwork. I remember when we did the police chief, I can't say enough good things about Vicky Relus. She really, you know, you get any committee together, let's face it, this one person does a work, like Marion, um, of the master plan committee, Marion really wrote the master plan. We all know that, right? You know, and it's like, you know, of the, yeah, a lot of work, you know, someone always does a legwork, and Vicky did a lot of legwork, another thing, and I hope she'll be on this committee as well. Um, and, uh, what do you call it? And, you know, and again, right off the gun, probably hire a consultant to kind of help us, uh, through that. Does that make sense?
It does, although I would add one thing is that I think Vicky did a tremendous job, but we could also consider Nancy Hess, who's on personnel board now and worked for the town. So she actually has more interaction with what the town administrator did, having been a, you know, the town collector.
Yeah.
She could, she could be, she could be an alternate. And I know Vicky has had some issues going on and everything too. So we could ask either one of them would be good.
I, as the chair of the police search committee, Godsend, and I think, I mean, not that Nancy couldn't be, but I think Vicky is fantastic, and I think she would be great for this.
But she has the time. That's my only concern.
Yeah, Paul.
Hi. Going back to the suggestion of all, all board members be on it, I think for the second solution, I, I know I would like to be on it, because like you, I'm familiar with a lot of town administrators across the state. I know people that probably do not want to hire. Uh, I've been through it in a town. I'd like to be on the committee. It sounds like Eric, you will be on the committee. Do the other three members want to be on the committee? If they don't want to be on the committee, that answers the question. It sounds like George doesn't want to be on the committee.
I didn't say that, Paul, at all. I don't know where you got that.
I, I don't want to be on the committee.
The point is.
That was quite a jump.
Any select board member who wants to be on the committee, I think they should be on the committee. So if you want to be on the committee, you should be on the committee. If you don't want to be on the committee, you don't have to be on the committee. So I'm modifying my proposal, not that it be automatically five select board members, but I would say those select board members who want to be on the committee should be on the committee. And if that's one or two, then it's one or two. If it's all five, all of you want to be on it, so all of you should be on it.
I, I would say I would defer, because Jeff, I think, has a lot of great experience with hiring people from his corporate experience. Um, and, and Eric has a lot of great connections, as he said, and, you know, I don't need to be, I think it's more important that we only have three and we make it a streamlined process than, than anybody who wants to be.
I agree, and I'm, uh, also willing to defer. I, I would like to be involved in the final decision and hearing the final candidates. But up to that point, I trust you, you three, Paul, Jeff, and Eric, and, uh, George and I both have a lot of other things on our plates, anyway.
I haven't heard from Jeff yet.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine either way. I, I, you know, I would be happy to be on it, but I don't feel like I have to be. I think, I, I think if we could sort of conceptually agree on the hybrid approach, I, where we would have everybody on the, when we're really down to the interview stage, not the preliminary stages, I think that would be the most effective. And we could define, it might not be all candidates, maybe we have a first round of interviews with only the three of us, and then if there's a half a dozen finalists, we have everybody participate, because it'll save time. But I, I'm fine either way. I, I'm happy to join, and then we'll have three, so that we have an odd number. In case we disagree, that might be a handy thing to have, too.
Well, I think, I think to round out your committee, we've talked about Vicky as a suggestion. I would also like to suggest, maybe, um, I don't know, if anyone would like to address him, I, he was on here. I don't know if he's still on and listening, but I, I've heard, I, maybe George Fisk would be a good suggestion for somebody that could be involved, or our town moderator, Mary Wolf, who's been very experienced. Uh, and there's also somebody else that I just would like to suggest in, to approach to potentially serve on this committee would be Erin Carroll, who was on the governance committee, and she's also a court curator. She could be.
She's great. She's awesome. Yeah, yeah. And I, I ditto that suggestion. She's on library trustees now, too, but she would be, she would be fantastic.
So how do we form this, basically? Um, say, three members of the select board, you could say one member of personnel, and then so many citizens at large. So let's say Vicky and Nancy wanted to be on it, they could actually, like, one could be a citizen at large.
Yeah, you could have three citizens, you could have three select board, one personnel, and then three citizens at large.
Now, does that have to be a citizen of town? Because I don't know if it's possible, but I know Chuck Yan also said he wanted to be on it. But I know he's on the police chief search committee, but maybe it's.
Yeah, I would probably defer to citizens before.
Okay.
Personally.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then we, I guess we take applications at that point and vet them at the next meeting?
Applications for, uh, candidates or for?
Yeah, I mean, we just like assign people right now. I think we have to actually, like, set up a structure.
Ask people if they're willing.
You know.
Just give some notice to the public that there's an opportunity for them, if they, some, well, people want to volunteer.
Put a note on the website or something. I mean, we could also recruit, like, someone like Kitty Sturgis or someone like that, if we wanted to.
Yeah.
Yeah, the bylaw says the select board shall start the process for hiring a new town administrator within 14 days of the incurrence of a vacancy.
Yeah, we're within like four hours, so we're good.
I'm just saying, we can't put it off too long.
No, no, no. And, and actually, I think this is starting by, so I think, Mary Ann, and all joking aside, I think just by the, if we vote a committee, which I would like to vote a committee tonight, a formed committee, and we could change, we tweak the police chief one at, at, at a ladder meeting, then I think that is starting the process. I do, I think, I think we're, um, we'd start in the process. Yeah, Paul, you have your hand raised.
So I want to make a motion to create a committee of seven, of which three would be select board members.
Yep.
One would be a member of the personnel board, and three citizens at large. And I also want to include in that the notion that what, that Jeff had indicated that, that, uh, as soon as we get to the point of interviewing candidates, that we involve the other two select board members.
I see what you're saying.
I second that, uh, motion.
I see what you're saying. All right. Motion and a second. So all in favor, uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Uh, Mary Ann?
Hi.
Uh, George?
Hi.
And Paul?
Hi.
Okay. I am I as well. Um, so Diane, I guess if we could get the advertisements out or something, or whatever it takes, that, um, what if you normally do, I think, for a lot of these volunteer, uh, positions? And if people know people, they can reach out, if they know people are interested, or have a good skillset, you know, select board people are always, um, you know, welcome to reach out to people and advocate for them, you know, uh, when we do the selection, when we meet.
I think I can pull up the, um, the old ad that might have been, I might, I might have everything from the last time. Um, it should get put into the MMA website. I think we think that would be the first.
No, no, we're talking about just for our committee, just for the.
Oh, okay.
Just the citizens at large, you know, like we have a group of volunteers.
I can get something on the website. Um, I can, um, see if Vicky would get something on, on our next door sherbet.
Yeah, and, um,
I'll run it by you, whatever gets out there, Eric, to make sure that it looks okay to you.
And who's the chair of personnel right now?
Nikki Anastopoulos. Yeah.
So maybe just reach out to him and just say, like, you know, we need you to, um, designate a member. Leave it up to the personnel board as to who that member is.
Okay.
So can I make a, a motion to appoint Eric and Jeff and my staff to the committee? Being a select board. Being a select board.
Sounds like self dealing there, Paul. You're promoting yourself. Yes, I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Marian?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
And I am as well, okay. I think that's it. I think we have the wheels of motion there. And, uh, you know, look forward to, uh, to bringing this one to a conclusion, certainly. Okay, moving on, uh, consideration of routine business. Under Select Board, we have our consideration of gra, granting signatory approval. Regarding the Select Board Vendor and Payroll Warrant. So is that needed anymore, Diane, since you're now the.
I don't believe so, because that was part of the motion.
Yeah, that's.
Care of that already. Good job, Paul. Way to be efficient.
That's very good. Uh, consideration of vote on behalf of the town at the January twenty second, uh, twenty twenty two MMA Annual Business Meeting.
Yes, now I just got an email to say that that it's not going to be in person anymore. I think it's going to be virtual now. Paul, are you aware of that?
Yes, indeed.
Will they still be doing this vote at that meeting?
Yeah, not, yes.
Okay.
But not in person.
Right. So the board needs to designate one of its board members. To vote on behalf of the town and the select board.
Yep, I was gonna say, it's kind of one obvious, one very active MMA member.
I can second the nomination.
Now, Paul, before we vote, have you accepted nomination if we vote for you?
Absolutely.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Marian?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
I am as well.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Um, is there any other select board, uh, reports or?
Yeah, yeah, I have one thing. Diane, remind me what I was supposed to bring up right now.
Oh, okay, yes, I actually did some, um. Uh, digging on that. At the, at the last meeting, we talked about, um. Having all of the volunteers to have a Sherwin M A email address. So I did, I called Kevin Whitman, who does a lot of our desktop services for us. And he told me it's about five dollars, uh, per user. And right now, we have a list with sixty eight volunteers. That don't have Sherwin M A email addresses. So in the meantime, I called and I spoke to Klaus Alvin. He does a lot of the IT work for the fire and the police department to check to see, like, what do big corporations do? They have worldwide employees, you know, they have a hundred thousand employees. And he said it's basically the same thing. It's, it's, it's very expensive and they spend lots of money. On having email addresses. And he uses a company called Lift Off. To get his, um, Microsoft, um, licensing needs for the police and fire. And his company, he gets four dollars a month for each user. So, at four dollars a month, and that's just to have the Sherwin M A email address. So just be emailing back and forth and wouldn't give them any other permissions. So it would come out to about thirty two hundred dollars a year. And I guess how it would work is. If one person decides to resign from a committee. I would have to let whoever's doing the licensing for us knows they pull that person off and then put a new person. So there always be some moving parts to it. But it's going to be whether the select will want to spend, that's, that's going to have to get embedded into the IT budget going forward. You know.
And I think, and I think, um, eventually, we talked about adding like an IT director or whatever, and, and the budget issue. That would be something they would administer as well.
Yeah, so when we do the select board, I'm actually bringing the select board budget forward at the next meeting because then we're in front of advisory. And there's a separate IT budget, and I put a salary line item in there for somebody.
Okay.
And, um, also with the select boards budget, because Paul mentioned, I also, and you mentioned, George, I have a salary line item for, um. Maybe a possible HR person too.
Perfect.
But those are all discussions we're going to have to have.
Okay, great. And I think we should make sure this is in the budget because I think we do need to have, I think for liability reasons, I know. I would think our town council would also recommend that we have everybody that's representing the town have a town email address, not a person.
I'd like to have Jeff Wes's hand raised.
Well, actually, two things. One, my hand was raised for another select board report after this one initially, but. I agree with everything George said, and our town council happens to be on here too, if he wants to add anything to that. Chris, I don't know if you want to. If you even heard that, I'm sure if he's listening in or not.
I, I did hear, and I think it probably makes sense. I mean, it's, it's cleaner to have a, a town email address for public records requests. Otherwise, people who do receive, uh, town related emails or public emails on their personal. Uh, email addresses, they have to maintain them as public, is cleaner and easier to maintain with town emails.
So I do want to ask, um, a detail about it to Diane or whoever got the cost estimate for it. So people come and go. You know, and you probably still have a set number of committees, you know, have certain more positions or certain more things. But when people go. Are those emails archived? Because that's the problem. I think it happens with corporations and it happens, um. Heck, even in, in other communities, when staff comes and goes, you know, those emails are still public record and, um. Well, I want to make sure we have some mechanism that those emails don't go away when that email.
I don't know. I guess I'm going to have to check on that, Eric. I didn't even give that a thought. Okay, so that's something I need to discuss then. How the emails are archived.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think, I think it goes to like town staff, it goes to other communities other than Sherwin. I know, we're definitely not unique in that, um. But, you know, I think a lot of IT departments don't have good means to, uh, to back up people's old emails and to have them. And I, and I just want to make sure this has some mechanism, that's all.
Okay, I'll check that out.
Oh, yeah, Paul?
Ri- rather than doing, Eric, anybody who volunteers for the town. I would say basically the, the regulatory boards, the planning board, Board of Appeals, the Conservation Commission. Because they're the ones that are going to get sued. They're the ones who are exercising independent regulatory authority. Those records really ought to be served and maintained. If you have people who volunteer for the town to go out and pick up trash on the. On Route twenty seven, uh, they're volunteers, but why do they need an email address? I mean, would they even be sending emails? So I think there could be. Some filtering of volunteers to be. Essentially the main regulatory boards.
That includes. It's a good, it's a good point, Paul.
Yeah, I agree fully. Like, this, uh, was a trustees assault on Academy, probably don't need.
Right, maybe the historic commission wouldn't need it, or the water commissioners, or the cemetery commissioners.
But then again, like, we'd never, probably would have said a few years ago, maybe we don't need our library trustees to have it, but.
Yeah. So, so another hybrid is we could do what, I like what Paul said about the regulatory boards like, uh, Z B A and Concom and Board of Health. But we could also then maybe just do for the other boards, do the Chair of the Board, but not the whole board, because usually the Chair would. Be the one sending out any major communication perhaps. So that might, I'm, you know, what, once again, we probably don't need the Cemetery Commission, but. We may find, like, maybe the Chair of Advisory should be one or something.
See what the cost comes out to, especially with not, that three thousand goes down. Marian, I see you have your hand raised.
Uh, that's for another select board report.
Oh, okay.
That would be maybe around thirty seven, thirty seven. Uh, you want to include zoning, conservation, planning, Board of Health, Library Board of Trustees, and the Building Committee. Comes out to about thirty seven volunteers.
Okay. You said a lot.
No.
We have a lot of volunteers in town.
Yes, we do. Um, okay, so what's the next steps on this one? Just come with a, just check out the archiving and then. Include it into the IT budget. Sounds like you need a vote from us.
For next year? We'll start that for next year? Is that what you're thinking?
I would put it in the budget and that's, let's, um, and you'll get the answers on, like you said, archiving and we'll go from there.
Yeah. Budget.
And then we could talk about it some more at the next meeting.
Great.
I'll have the information by then.
Okay, I see, um, Jeff and then Marian, I think you each have reports. So Jeff, um, you go, you had your hand raised first.
Yeah, mine was a call from Frank Jenkins actually earlier this week, as you probably know better than I do, especially Paul knows better. Um, the, the Leland Farms has the Board of Trustees and Leland Farms has going through some financial issues, as people know, I think. And so this week, the, and of the trustees, the town has one designated trustee to Leland Farms. Board, and that person resigned on Tuesday. That's, um, Alicia Goody. So we will have to, uh, I'm just bringing it up now that I think in one of the next, say, two. Uh, select board meetings, we should discuss appointing bless whoever that was. We, if we should, um, uh, uh, talk about. Getting candidates that we would want to consider to be a trustee for, represent the town for Leland Farms, but. Longer term, we, they have some sort of major capital issues there, so we may have to, um, think about, um. What kind of resources we could help with Leland Farms. We're already doing that water project that's tied in with Woodhaven, but. There's probably some other capital issues there that, and it with, there are seventeen units that of the seventeen, ten are affordable and. Seven are market rate, so I think particularly the affordable units are having trouble, you know, coming up with the funds for the. Capital improvements that are needed, so. It's two issues at Leland, so I'm just proposing, I'm just letting people know that the trustee resigned. Um, and the, that we need to appoint someone and that we probably need longer term to look at Leland Farms.
Yeah, well, ARPA funds can be used for water sewer ones. Now, I see a lot of hands raised. Is this is what Jeff said, or is this people bringing up new select board item?
Marian has a new one, and then I have a new one.
Okay.
Yours is to what Jeff, uh, Jeff was talking about?
Yes, I, I'll start the process, because it just came in her resignation. I'll start the process of getting in the newspaper. We'll get it on next door Sherwin. And so we'll, we'll get it out there that we're looking for somebody that might be interested in being a trustee.
Okay. Now, Paul, did you have something relative to Jeff, or did you have your own select board item?
I have two.
Okay, then, I'm gonna hold off on that one for now. Sean, I'm guessing you have something about Woodhaven or Leland or whatever.
Actually, I did. There was a, there's a third issue with Leland that I'm not sure you guys are aware of, that Remax. Um, who's been managing the property also announced that they're not going to continue managing that property. So the town is going to have to. Probably pay a little more attention to Leland and make sure we're helping them, uh, steer where they're headed.
That's a good point. And I know we use some ARPA funds for their water thing, which is, well, anyways, I think they're on that road. Okay. Um, I think that's all the discussion on that one, and that's a good point. Maybe that becomes an agenda item in the near future. Do that. So Marian, you have your hand raised. I think you had a, a select board item.
Yeah, I have a couple of brief things. Uh, one is the Open Space Committee, um. Really appreciated your response to, to the, um, interim master plan update that they gave you a few weeks ago. And, uh, in response to your comment that it would be good to have. Uh, updates from the various committees around town that are doing significant things that the select board as a central body doesn't know about. Um, uh, the Open Space Committee at their last meeting, uh, proposed that, uh, they. Recruit the, uh, committees that are concerned with the report that we've done so far. And offer a ten or fifteen minute report at the select board over the course of the coming year. And, uh, we are willing to coordinate that for you. We understand that things, the agendas are very full up to town meeting. Probably wouldn't start until after that, but we're ready, we're ready to line it up for you if you want. So periodically, we'll, uh. We'll try to put together a.
That would be one.
A list of committees that are ready to report to you, and then you can just decide when you want to hear them.
Is that sound okay?
Yeah, it does. And, and really, uh, select board meetings get full, why I call budget season, it's really up until the Marathon Saturday meeting, we do an advisory. You know, so we meet about all the budgets and discuss them all. Then we have that advisory meeting, and after that. It kind of opens up even through town meeting at that point there, because things are all vetted and it's ready for town meeting. When does that usually happen? Is that early March?
It'll be middle to end of March, yeah.
Mar- March, the date is March twenty six.
Oh, it's late. So it might be full meetings up until then, and then after then, hopefully things open up.
Okay. Uh, I, I had a second small item. Um, after, uh, hearing, uh, Daryl's, uh, report. And the, uh, recommendations, the new recommendations to the town, especially geared toward. Town employees, but really appropriate for anyone about, uh, you know, uh, working remotely. Or the rules that you should follow in terms of masking, time to return, getting a test, et cetera. Uh, the question remains, and I think Daryl would like a, a answer to this, and so would I, and I'm sure Jeff would too. Uh, in town hall and in town buildings, who is going to enforce these? Uh, that is, we, we, it's been brought up before, and I don't want to even open the discussion now because I think it's a complicated one. But, uh, I think it would be good to have, uh, sort of a designated body. That, uh, complaints or concerns can be brought to for that.
I mean, so if it's a staff person that's not wearing it, every staff person has a supervisor to some degree, except for the highest elected officials in there. And at that point, then it actually goes to town administrator beyond that. Um, I don't. I don't like the idea of having masked police, you know what I mean? We're all professionals. We should be, you know, do as we're told. If there's someone that's consistently violating something like that, it has to be, um, elevated up the, uh, the chain of line management. That's how I vision it. And if anyone else has any thoughts on it, you know.
Well, one, one concern is the people coming into town hall to do business.
Yeah, you can ask them. So I, I run an office, I run a municipal office myself. And, you know, every now and then you got to tell someone, uh, member of the public, please put a mask on. They've consistently done it and. We get, you know, a fair amount of foot traffic, uh, where I work. So eventually, if someone is belligerent and doesn't, they have kind of greater issues. Then I think the mask to some degree. Um, you know, I haven't had to do it, but I think people from the building department are afraid, and you've had to call the police on, on people who get like, you know, out of hand. Um, knock on wood, I've been, I've been able to talk people down in those rare cases, but, um. Yeah, you know, usually, you know, whoever they're coming to visit would ask them, say, you know, please put a mask on. If they come and visit treasurer, treasurer would ask them, so on and so forth like that. Yeah, Paul?
Reasonable to you, Diane, as town.
Yes, it does. And, and we have box of masks at each of the entrance. That we have for people to put on, and we have to ask people to put masks on, and they're. Very willing to comply, and most people come in with a mask.
Yeah.
Especially right now, most people are coming in.
I see Paul raising his literal hand.
Yes, though, I was just to comment on this, that the Board of Health. Action was a, a recommendation and advisory. We have the power to make it mandatory. Because we're responsible for. I think at one point we did make it mandatory, and maybe that's still in effect, but if not. We perhaps should consider the idea of making it mandatory. For anybody coming into town hall or working in town, they have to have a mask. It's very hard to call police when somebody, when all you're dealing with is a recommendation. Because then what is the police officer going to do? Well, you've been recommended to wear a mask. But I can't. I can't really enforce a recommendation. But if we're getting to the point where you want enforcing authorities, I think there has to be a vote of this board to require masks. In town hall and perhaps other public buildings.
And are you seeing a problem with people coming in without masks?
No, not really. Just about everybody is coming in with, but at one time we did have a, a, a note on the door that said. Masks were required in order to enter the town hall. We did.
Are we addressing a problem that doesn't exist?
I don't, I don't really see it. I, I, I see most people have masks on that are coming in.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think George, I think George is agreeing with you. I think the other thing is, you know, some people can have health conditions that prevents them from wearing masks. So we, you would have to, you know, determine if that was the situation.
Yeah, that's, that's very, very, very rare.
I do want to say though, that, that goes back to the question that I asked. Maybe I didn't ask it well enough back in Agenda Item Number Two. Where I asked if we were simply voting to endorse it or if we were voting as the, um, caretakers of public buildings to enforce it, and I don't think. Yeah. All right, so who here has a question about this? So I see, um, George is next. I'm assuming that's a.
That's a new select board report, so. So Daryl, I assume is on Marian's, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so yes, uh, I did want to comment on that. Uh, one, it'd be great if we could put signs up on the door again advising visitors that they. Must wear a well-fitting mask. That would be good. And I just wanted to let you know that. The Board of Health hears from various town employees across the town. from time to time who are very concerned about being in offices where people aren't following the protocols. So as we enter this time of protocols, again, that's why I think this is going to be particularly important. Because it's awkward for those employees to deal with that within the space on their own. So having something that's indicating that the select board is taking it seriously, I think would go a long way.
Well, we did vote to endorse, endorse the recommendation. That's good. I'm not comfortable now going back to agenda item we closed a long time ago and voting to enforce. But I think we can, um.
I don't think, let's try it with the endorse and the seriousness behind it before moving on to enforcement. Because that's uncomfortable for everyone. But I think people need to feel like for those people who are concerned, and I do think it's the majority of people based on comments we get that I think that'd be helpful.
I wonder if I have a sign at the door saying that it's recommended that you wear a mask at the town hall.
I'm actually saying the following, I thought.
I would say required would be my preference.
Yeah, recommended this.
Okay.
Actually, I would, I'd recommend saying the following, just in case it's not an actual mandate. Say, um, please wear a mask when going inside.
You know, there are stores and all kinds of venues around everywhere now that say mask, a mask is required. And I don't have any problem with saying a mask is required.
Just giving our last vote, I don't know if we can say it. I was gonna be honest. I think it's, you know, if we come back and people, I sound like George, you might be like, well, I don't know. Let's put it this way, I think to say please wear a mask when inside this building.
We see a problem that people aren't wearing a mask and we need more, then let's do more at that point.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll get those signs up on Tuesday or tomorrow.
Yeah.
And just, it goes beyond the mask issue. It also goes to the people not coming in with symptoms. People letting others know if they did test positive and were close contacts. So all those things I think would help people to feel more comfortable if they're still working in the same spaces together.
Yep. And, and then people might be approaching Diane and maybe just kind of keep track or approaching you, Daryl, or approaching, you know, Port of Health staff. And we'll keep it confidential. But if it feels though that, you know, I know people don't want to be whatever, tattletale or whatever it is. But if people approach confidential, we'll kind of gauge, okay, there's two or three people, maybe we got to take this to the next level.
Okay.
I do want to say that, you know, it's evidence for neighbors because I hear the train outside my window and I hear it through Daryl's speaker as well. All right. So who do we have? We have, um, George. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is kind of a joint update from Marian and I. So Marian, feel free to jump in if I'm misspeaking. But we've been informed, Pulte is pulling out of the Coolidge Street project. We've been having some discussions with Baystone to make sure that they are also not pulling out. I think we're, we're concerned. This has been a project that the town has put a lot of time and effort into that it seems there's a lot of support for. I was disappointed that Pulte pulled out without talking to us. And I think some of the reasoning behind it comes from the fact that there's been discussions with Framingham for water. Framingham seems to be on board, but the state is not on board. That's, that's been, that's kind of what we've heard. And I just, I'm hoping there's a way that we could pull this back together, whether with, with somebody else, or I know we're in discussions with Baystone to make sure that they are still on board. So Marian, what else? What did I miss?
Yeah, I'd like to jump in there. Baystone did share with us the, a voluminous report from the Water Resource Authority of the state. And I think that's what you're referring to, George. I've been through that with a fine tooth comb, and it is really not that negative. It just lays out a lot of things that weren't done in the initial EIR. And that should be done in, in the final application. And to me, it looks totally doable. But I think one of the unfortunate things here was that Pulte was basically given the responsibility without much, without any oversight from the town that, that I know of to negotiate the deal with Natick and Framingham. And of course, we have no idea exactly what went on in those meetings. And obviously, Pulte just found it was too much trouble. So we've communicated with, with Baystone that the town is ready to assist, you know, with the, with the documentation we have and environmental materials, et cetera, et cetera, whatever we can do to help them with their reapplication to the state. And I think, you know, looking at it from my point of view, and I've read every word of it, it's totally doable. So now the the approach is to assure Baystone that they can have a lot of support from the town if they agree to go forward.
Right. And part of this, there's a little bit more complication to it too, that Pulte is pulling out, but Pulte doesn't even own anything. The land is actually still owned by Ben Stevens and another party.
It's on still, Ben Stevens just had an option. He didn't own it either.
Oh, I think, no, I thought he owns part of, he owns some of the land and another gentleman, I think Rocco, somebody owns, owns part of the land, and they have agreements to buy it from him. So but anyway, we're I know Marian and I have both had chats with them as well as Addie Weiss. And, you know, we're, we're trying to see how, because I think there was a lot of support for those projects, and it would be a shame if they all just fell apart with an effort from the town to try to move it forward as, as we talked about earlier. I think it's a big important piece of our master plan for the town to that would help us get to that 10% number. And, and we've got to do whatever we can to try to salvage it.
A, a if one of the first actions in addition to getting the talks with Natick and Framingham ramped up again with representatives from this board and from and from Baystone and whoever else becomes involved in this is that the town has to has to have approved a town meeting, a water district. And we talked about the North Worth Sherwin Water District. That's kind of a requirement for going to MR, MWRA with a proposal. So it may be, I think it probably is too late for the upcoming town meeting, but that's going to be very high on the agenda. If we're able to keep Baystone in the project or find another way to go forward.
We just wanted the board to be aware of what was going on, since Marian and I have both been having these discussions. We thought it was appropriate for the board and the public to know kind of what's happening.
Actually, we waited until now because the Baystone folks, Ray and Todd McDowell asked us not to discuss it. But now we find it's kind of, the information has percolated a bit around the town, and we just didn't want you to hear it from anyone else but us. But it still is.
I did see, Jeannie did put on the chat that we do have a placeholder for that water district. We did, we did put placeholder on it for this, this warrant.
Oh, good. Okay, I had forgotten that.
So we can still move forward with that with this town meeting.
So we can bring that up maybe next week or the first time we have an option.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Did you have any, Jeannie, I see you raise your hand, but I may have stole your thunder.
No, I'm all set. I wanted you to be aware of it.
That was very, thank you. Top of that, absolutely. Yeah, I think Paul, well, he's the next, so we'll be done with this one. So make sure Paul, I think, has his own. Okay, Paul, to give a select board report.
Two things that the board had voted in the past, and I'd like to see get implemented. I'm not sure why they haven't been. The first is that we were going to do a RFP for the community center. And I believe the RFP was prepared. I believe that it tracked the last time there was an RFP, maybe 10 years ago. And landed on Dave Williams's desk and never got actually issued. So the lease is coming up and, and I guess next year, we have to do an RFP for what happens to that. Yes, just go ahead and sign something. But I want, want to make sure that that document that's sitting on Dave Williams's desk gets out the door. I think we already voted it. It's just hanging up there. And because now we have a acting or interim town administrator, I want to, I want to be able to give her the comfort of her knowing that the sport still wants the RFP to go out. We haven't changed our mind.
I, I'm going to comment on that. Unless someone else wants to go first.
Well, you and Diane both have your hands raised. You can fight it out.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I, I don't disagree, Paul, but the only thing is this is we also, also authorize the COA to do this study on what their needs are. So one, one possibility is that we don't renew the lease to anyone, and we use it as a town building. If we decide that we need it, I don't know that we will, but I'm not sure we're at the RFP stage yet as far as I'm concerned. You know, the COA's hired UMass to do this study of their long term needs for not just office space, but for their, all their services. And I'm not advocating one thing or the other, but I think we need to know results of that survey before we decide if we want to go out for, you know, RFPs, I would think.
We also, we also need to find a place for the historical commission to have its requirement of our town. And I think that should be a consideration to use the community center.
Yeah, I think we may, I can, I can, let's make that a different item, but I have I, I, you reminded me, I can talk about that a little bit also.
Maybe another night. We were getting late here tonight.
I can do it. I can do it in two, two minutes, two minutes. I can tell you. So I'm not disagreeing, Paul, but I, I, we may have to decide what we want to do with the community center.
So that is that doing an RFP doesn't require you to do anything. It only gives you information.
No, I know, but you're putting a lot of people through proposals that you may not be serious about.
Well, let's say we get 10 proposals, and some of them is from Framingham, some is from the United States government, some is from local committees. At least we know that, you know, somebody's willing to pay a million dollars for this space. Somebody wants to pay $1 for the space or whatever. You have you have information. You don't have to accept anything. As I said, I think we voted that we're going to do that to see what's out there. And if we decide to do something with the building ourselves, that option remains. If we decide we want to actually say lease this to the United States for a million bucks, we can go ahead and do that. That will be behind it.
I see Diane has her hand raised. He's just left.
I just wanted to make sure I got some direction from the town as to whether I move forward with it, or if it comes back for another discussion. But it, we've been holding on to this, this RFP for at least a month. And it's ready to, to do something with. And it's also on the warrant checklist for us to enter into a long term lease agreement too. So in case we decide to do that, that has to go in front of town meeting to be voted by the voters. That we can enter into a long term lease agreement with, with the community center if that's the way the town decides to go forward.
So just remind me, how did we vote when this came before us? I mean, we can't vote now. This is just a report. But how did we vote when it came before us? Was there a vote to release this RFP? I just can't remember.
Yeah. I think we did, but I don't remember what meeting that was.
Maybe if I had to look at the replays and then just kind of confirm that, you know, we voted to release it. Was there, so now there might be reason not to release it, I guess. I have to go back and look at the minutes or look at, um, look at the video.
I have to go back and do some digging where it is.
It sounds like a vote to release it. You know, I'd like to kind of like get an idea of actually like, you know, was it just like, you know, sitting on David's desk and just didn't go out? Or was there some intentional reason it's being held back? I guess.
There was no intentional reason was being held back. It's just that the office gets busy and, you know, we spent some time. The, the, the original document was pretty old, and I gave it to Jeannie, and she did her little magic tricks that she does with documents and made it look really nice and ready to be put out to bid. And then from there, we decided I wanted to have David take a look at it. Because I didn't think it was my place to just get it out there. And one thing led to another, and it just never moved.
Sounds like it should go out. I see Sean has something to add. Is it quick, Sean, or go ahead?
It, it is quick. There's, there's a couple of things at play, and Chris may not want to mention, uh, jump on this, but Amanda was looking at this because the other thing that's on the warrant checklist right now is a long term cell tower lease.
Yep.
There is a Verizon cell tower in that building, so that needs to be addressed. They're both on the warrant checklist right now. Hoping that we'll shake this all out before town meeting or approve the RFP post town meeting, I think was the intent. Because none of these RFPs will be back before town meeting, I don't think. Uh, there's a list of long term leases that'll some may or may not end up on this, this meeting.
See a bunch of hands up. Paul's is leftover.
Mine's leftover, yeah.
Yours is leftover.
Those are getting very late, so if we can.
Oh, I get a little on my hand, I'm sorry.
I had two issues. One was to address getting that out.
Yep.
The other one was I think we also voted to approve a plan to do some movement of people in town hall. And as we were discussing at town administrator, I was envisioning in my mind bringing a potential new town administrator and showing him town hall and, and looking at the offices there where you got the building inspector and you've got all kinds of things going on in, in the Board of Select was office. Let's get that move done. I think we voted to, to approve the plan. Why isn't that move taken twice? Isn't it a good time to do it while we're having this transition from one town administrator to another?
I, I don't know much about the move.
Well, I've been involved in it a little bit, and I, there's a lot of moving pieces here, including the availability of contractors and, and and designers to do the work is one thing. Because the first step is we have to build out the land use office in the basement. And then move everything from that room upstairs with the Board of Health, the planning board, and the all the building departments, including the building inspector who's in the select board office right now down to the basement. That's the first step that has to happen. And, and that's delayed because of getting the work done. Sean's been working on it, I know. And then the next step, the only other major part of the move is that we're considering putting the COA in the that office that would be vacated where the, the Board of Health is now. And so garden level, I know, not basement, adding me is giving me a hard time. So I'm walking through next Friday afternoon at 2:30 with Jim Campbell, Pete Hogland, and Sue Kelleher. The space upstairs, I've scheduled to meet with them and we walk through with them. So it's, it's underway, but there's a lot of work that has to be done to get the land use office set up. It includes, it's not just like moving things. We have to build out workstations. We have to build out counters for drawings and all that kind of stuff. So with all the work that went on this past fall and the Pine Hill access road and everything, it's not where could have been, but I think we're moving in that direction.
Can I encourage to be done later? It's going to take us a while to hire a new town administrator. But if you just go in there and look over the car, you see a lot of papers. Very attractive.
Yeah. It's, it's going to take a while, Paul. It's not a, it's not a quick thing.
It's also been kicking around for quite a while. I think we voted approval of the plan.
Yes, that's true.
I recall Sean Cullin talking about the weight of the files being up on the upper storage.
That's an issue, yep.
Not, not good for the building and all that kind of stuff.
No, we've got a room designated in the far back of that space where the museum used to be. There's a room that has no windows. So we've designated a space for the file storage. Long term, we would like to get the sort of there's a file storage system where the racks move together so you can fit more documents and there's a file storage system where the racks move together so you can fit more documents in one room where, you know, they slide back and forth and but those are very long lead time items to procure. So we're not planning to do that. We're planning to just move the existing file cabinets down to that space. There's issues because um, the height of the sprinkler heads in that space, you can't put file cabinets any closer than eighteen inches to a sprinkler head. So we may have to relocate sprinkler heads. It's just different, different things.
Eric, can we move on? We're
Yeah, yeah.
We still have an executive session.
We got the point that we're frustrated um, with the move. It appears that, you know, Jeff is meeting people on it and looks like it's resolved. And at the next meeting, we're going to um, allocate ARPA funds to adjust the building so it can, for the move. All right. If, if there's any, any other select board reports? Okay. Very good. Hold on, I gotta bring up my um, my agenda here. Okay, uh, any town administrator reports?
You're muted, Diane.
I don't, I don't now this late light, but I will have something for the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Well, any further, um, any further delay? As chair, I, I, was I deemed that an executive session is warranted for the agenda items as previously read by the town administrator at the beginning of the meeting. So I move that we, I declare that that executive session is appropriate. And I um, I move that we uh, go into executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Well, I'll second it, but I think Susan Tyler has a hand raised.
I think she has a point of order. Yes, this is a point of order.
No water. I just have to say congratulations to Diane.
Absolutely.
And I'm sorry, Happy New Year to you all.
They're absolutely, the chat is full of congratulations. Absolutely. So okay, all in favor, uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
I might as well. Or Sue, just change your name to Sue. She has some code name.
I know, I know. I wondered the same thing.
Do you want to hear a scary thing, if I may?
Sure.
I discovered yesterday, because I got some mail that wasn't mine, didn't understand it. There are two Susan L. Tylers in Belcher Town. God help this town.
Not only that, but you have a twin sister too.
That's right.
There's three of you, I look at.
Everybody says anything bad, you say it's the other two.
I met, I've met the woman, I took the mail. I introduced myself as Susan L. She said she was Susan L. And we started talking, and she says, oh, we're going to have great fun at town meeting.
All right, it's ten fifty two. Night.